Good evening and welcome. This is the City of Summit's June 23 Planning Board Meeting. And I'm Jennifer Balson Alvarez, and I'm filling in today for Chairman Spur, who has been excused from this meeting. Now, let's all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
... to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Acting Board Secretary Sands, can you please share the adequate notice statement?
Absolutely. In accordance with New Jersey statute 10:4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the newspapers of record and has been posted here in City Hall. For the benefit of the interested public, this meeting is being livestreamed to the city's YouTube page and also broadcast on Summit's government channel, which is Comcast Channel 34 and Verizon Channel 30. Please note that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room where you entered. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the necessary equipment here at the dais and return it immediately after our meeting.
Great. Thank you. Can you do the roll call now, please, Ms. Sands?
Chairman Spur is excused. Vice Chair Balson Alvarez?
Here.
Mayor Fagan?
Here.
Councilmember Hamlet?
Here.
Ms. Bowen?
Here.
Mr. Delmaso?
Here.
Mr. Felment is excused. Mr. Formicelli?
Here.
Mr. LeJoy?
Here.
Mr. Sala?
Mr. Stern?
Here.
We have a quorum, and you may proceed with the meeting.
Great. Thank you. Okay. I'd like to take one item out of order. I'd like to propose the resolution to appoint our acting board secretary as our official board secretary. So, do we have a motion to...
If I may, Madam Chair, we do have a resolution that was distributed to the board, so we could go right to the motion to adopt that resolution if it's accurate.
Second. Thank you. All right. So, we need to do a roll call.
Vice Chair Balson Alvarez?
Yes.
Mayor Fagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamlet?
Yes.
Ms. Bowen?
Yes.
Mr. Delmaso?
Yes.
Mr. Formicelli?
Yes.
Mr. LeJoy?
Yes.
And Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Great. Congratulations. Welcome. All right. We have a new board secretary. Okay. So, I'd also like to introduce our public planning board officials and consultants. So, we have Steve Werner here, our planning board attorney, Joe Burgess, and Tom Brennan's here tonight, our planners, and Ms. Holmes, our housing attorney for this special meeting. And thank you for being here.
Pleasure.
Okay. We're now going to turn to the next item on our agenda, the round for Housing Element and Fair Share Plan hearing. Our city planner, Mr. Burgess, will present information on Summit's proposed Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. After his presentation, the planning board may ask questions, followed by the public question and comment period. At the conclusion of the public question and comment period, Mr. Burgess and Ms. Holmes, and if we have other officials that want to chime in, will address all questions asked. So, take it away.
And Madam Chair, if I may swear, Mr. Burgess in. Do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Okay. Thank you. And please feel free to provide your credentials and make the presentation.
Certainly. I have a master's degree in city and regional planning from Rutgers University some time ago. I'm licensed by the state of New Jersey as a professional planner, license number 2450. I'm certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners and a member of the American Planning Association. Burgess Associates was formed back in 1988. Over the course of all those years, we have represented in excess of 100 municipalities throughout the state. At present, we represent 43 municipalities doing affordable housing issues. There are others that we're not doing affordable housing issues for. In addition to that, I have a special expertise in the issue of, with the issue of affordable housing. I was special master for quite a number of judges throughout the state when that process began. And with the fourth round, when the state created a new process and they established what's called the Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program, they had appointed seven retired affordable housing judges to oversee the initial steps of the process. One of those seven had to vacate the position because of an illness. But of the remaining six, I was serving as special adjudicator for all of those six judges, reviewing plans and helping mediate disputes between the affordable housing numbers that they received and what the judges recommended to the individual vicinity affordable housing judge.
Very well called, then.
Okay. So, what I'd like to do...
Inducively qualified.
Thank you. What I would like to do is spend about 30 minutes making a presentation. Going around the state as I have, especially over the past few weeks, as towns started to have their public hearings on their housing plans, I found that in the audience, as well as with the boards, there are some people that are very knowledgeable about the issue, and on the other hand, there are some that aren't. So, I thought it might be beneficial to take a few minutes to present some background information and data on the overall affordable housing issue, explain it in some detail, and then we'll get into the specifics of Summit's plan. As had been indicated, this is the public hearing on the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. This is a state mandated document, and it is an element of the city's master plan. The municipal land use law identifies over a dozen separate elements that can comprise a master plan, but the two elements that every municipality must have is a land use element, which we have, and a Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. And without a Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, the way the statute is worded, a municipality cannot have a zoning ordinance. And so, to make sure we have a zoning ordinance, for a variety of other reasons as well, it is important to adopt a Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. Now, this affordable housing issue is not a new issue. It goes back to 1975, when the Supreme Court of the state of New Jersey approves the original Mount Laurel I decision. At that time, the Supreme Court ruled that every developing municipality in the state has to provide for its constitutional obligation to address its fair share housing needs. And in the second decision in 1983, they refined that decision to say that every municipality has such an obligation. And the only distinction that they were making is that those municipalities that were in the developing area of the state plan had a greater obligation than those that were not in the developed, developing area of the state plan. But they also said that while every municipality has this obligation, they felt it was incumbent upon the state legislature to adopt legislation to really address the issue and take the bull by the horns. And the state did that. In 1986, they adopted the Fair Housing Act, and then the following year, they created the Council on Affordable Housing, commonly referred to as COA. And the following year after that, in 1987, COA published housing need numbers for everybody, every municipality in the state, and adopted the regulations that we had to follow through. Now, initially, every housing round covered a six-year period. Beginning with the third round, that changed at some point in the early 2000s to a 10-year period, but that's neither here nor there. We are now in the fourth round of affordable housing responsibility, and with this round, the state has substantially modified the process and the timelines under which we are to act. Now, you had heard me mention earlier that the state had created this Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program. This was the very first step in the process, and I'll get into the timeline in a moment, how that all fits in. But that's, the creation of that entity with the six retired affordable housing judges was something new and never part of the process before that. And we'll get into the timeframe in one moment. But what I would like to do is review the timelines for action, so everybody understands, you know, what these timelines are, what they're about, and why they are important. I will then describe what New Jersey has defined as affordable housing, so we understand what it means and what, more importantly, it doesn't mean, because quite often, when I go around the state, there's this impression that we're talking about the hardcore poor, and clearly, that is not the case. the case, and I'll explain that in a moment. Then we'll discuss what our affordable housing number is, including what the state originally has given us, or DCA, Department of Community Affairs, has given us, and then how we are entitled to adjust it based on the fact that we're a fully developed municipality. And I'll talk about that process, and then conclude with what our plan is all about. I would like to highlight a few simple facts at the outset. DCA, the Department of Community Affairs, has established the initial determination of need, and they did so by initially calculating statewide what that need is. And they had determined that statewide, New Jersey needs about 86,000 affordable units over the next 10-year period. That period would start July 1 of this year and go through June 30th of 2035. The state is broken up into six different housing regions, and they distributed that number amongst those six regions, and then took those numbers by region and distributed them out to the individual municipalities. Now, DCA has initially determined that Summit has an affordable housing obligation of 345 affordable dwelling units. Now, I would venture a guess that if I asked for a show of hands, virtually everyone in this room would probably agree that that's an excessive number, given the fact that you're a fully developed municipality. And you'd be right because of that fact. But having said that, I know that some of you have questioned why, back in January, Summit accepted that number to start the process. And we accepted that number for a very simple reason. It's because the legislation that was enacted by the state legislature limited the assessment as to whether DCA properly applied their methodology, whether they applied that methodology properly. It did not talk about whether or not you agreed with the methodology. And they did. Our review of the methodology for Summit indicated that they applied the methodology correctly. However, that does not preclude the municipality from seeking a vacant land adjustment to reduce that number consistent with certain very specific regulations. And in our resolution, where we identified the fact that we were accepting that 345-unit number, we did specifically state that we will be seeking a vacant land adjustment and what's called a determination of our realistic development potential based on the regulations, and also based on the fact that in the prior rounds, we also had received a vacant land adjustment, and we're just going to continue with this, with that fact. Now, it was actually a good thing that we did, and I'll tell you why. Because those towns that attacked the methodology did not fare very well in this process. In fact, those towns that attacked the methodology had objections to their determination with the understanding that they used an improper analysis that was inconsistent with the legislation. And those objections also indicated that the reality was in many instances that their number should actually have been increased rather than decreased, because the methodology actually called for a greater number. I always cite one municipality in particular that sought their number to be reduced by about 25 units because of the fact that they felt the methodology was improper, and their assessment suggested a slightly lower number. The response by the objectors was that that was improper, but also that that town's number should be increased by 202 units. We avoided all that. We accepted the number. We've now prepared a plan that deals with the vacant land adjustment, and have come up with a much lower realistic development potential that we're comfortable. And by avoiding all that, you avoided the expense of that fight, and you're going to end up in the same place where you would have ended up anyway. So the only other background information I want to highlight is that, as I said, there are four housing rounds. The first one was between 1987 and 93, and then the second was between 19, they extended it to the first, combined first and second round, so it was 1987 through 1999. During that time, the Council on Affordable Housing established the numbers, they established the regulations. Beginning with the third round, at the end of, beginning in 1999, they changed the rules of the game. And they changed it dramatically, and consistently, people objected to their methodology, and consistently, COA lost. And that third round, although it was supposed to go for a 10-year period, it turned out it dragged on for a 16-year period. Went from 1999 for 16 to 2015, when the Supreme Court finally ruled that COA had become so dysfunctional that the courts were taking over the process. And that's where we are still, up until this now fourth round. So let's talk a little bit about our first slide, where we talk about the program and the timeline. Now, DCA was required to publish preliminary housing need numbers for every municipality, and they did so by late October of 2024. Now, since then, there was a timeframe for the month of January that municipalities could look at that number and determine whether it met the, it was done consistent with the methodology or not. And that was done and had to be completed in a resolution filed by the end of January of 2025. In the month of February, anybody could object to that number, and many municipalities had objections. Department of, excuse me, the New Jersey Builders Association, for example, filed 159 objections to plans. Fair Share Housing Center was a little more discreet than that. They filed 68 objections to individual plans. And there was some overlap between those two entities. In other instances, individual developers filed objections to plans, and in a few other instances, just interested citizens filed objections to the way the towns are determining whether the methodology was done properly or not. And it wasn't until after February 28th, when we learned that no one had filed an objection to Summit's determination. That was a good thing. So beginning with March of 2025, we began to seriously review with the governing body and periodically with the planning board and a subcommittee that was formed, reviewing what our analysis was beginning to show in terms of what our need actually was through vacant land adjustment process, and what our realistic development potential was going to be. Now, that process was spelled out in the legislation. It was somewhat similar to the prior process, but also had some other significant changes and nuances. So, for example, you would first have to look at and map all vacant land in the community, which we did. And then you overlay on that map all environmental constraints that are spelled out in the legislation. So we looked at wetlands, we looked at floodplains, we looked at wetland buffer requirements, floodplain buffer requirements, C1 stream buffers and their buffer requirements. And we determined, out of all the vacant land in the community, how little of that vacant land was actually developable. And that helped lead us to our RDP, our realistic development potential, which from now on, I'll refer to as RDP. And through that process, we then began to put together the plan, working with this subcommittee in town, and then informing the governing body, and occasionally also meeting with the planning board. We are now at that point where the statute mandates that we have to file a plan by the end of this month. Why is that critical? It's critical because the legislation says that if a municipality does not file by June 30th, you will lose your immunity from any exclusionary zoning litigation, and any developer could come forward and sue you. That's why that is so important. It's the last thing you want to see happen. Now, I know there are some people that are upset with the idea, because I hear this statewide, that towns are meeting in the month of June to adopt a plan, and that doesn't give the public that much say in the matter. The reality is, however, that we can amend the plan anytime we want to amend the plan. And depending on what we hear from the public, for example, this evening, you might choose over the summer to amend the plan. Now, the other important steps is that beginning July 1, and through the month of July, and through the month of August, anybody can file an objection to your plan. And it's the same cast of characters that I mentioned before. Fair Share Housing Center, the Builders Association, developers, or just interested citizens can file objections. Beginning in September, the six judges that I mentioned earlier come back into play, because they will get to evaluate these objections. Now, they are obligated by the legislation that, once they begin the review of a town's objections to a town, they have 10 days to make a recommendation to the individual vicinity affordable housing judge. Because remember, these people are retired judges, so all they do is make a recommendation to the affordable housing judge. And that's when we believe this process is going to slow down a little bit. Just like in the first step of the process, where these affordable housing program judges were supposed to have everything completed by the end of March, that just didn't happen. In a large measure, it did. But there are many municipalities that didn't get their number until, you know, sometime in April, sometime in May. I had, and again, they make a recommendation to the court. I had one town where we had our public hearing a week and a half ago, and the affordable housing judge decided last week, at the beginning of, you know, last week, that the number that was selected, they did not agree with, and they actually called for a lower number, the number that we had actually recommended initially to affordable housing, retired judge didn't agree with. So now we have to go back into, in July, and amend our housing plan to reflect that lower number, which only helps them. So that's where the process has slowed down a bit. So the process, you know, will continue. The judges are going to make their decisions whenever they make them, and make a recommendation to the affordable housing judge. And at that point, and I had said this before in a public meeting, in all likelihood, the one that loses that decision will probably go for an appeal. And then the appeal could take place through the winter or even into the spring, I'm being told, before all of this gets resolved. The reason why I bring all that up is there are certain provisions in the legislation that were written in such a way that it leaves a lot for interpretation. There's one provision in particular. The statute, excuse me, legislation says that for vacant land adjustment municipalities, and we are one, you are obligated to provide 25% of your prospective need as it has been adjusted. That's the quote. And there's multiple interpretations as to what that actually means. We have taken the position that we're taking the words as they are written. And historically, when you talk about an adjusted prospective need number, that is RDP. So we would be taking 25% of our RDP, which is 18, and then add that onto the 18, and have to deal with that number through, that additional number gets dealt with through redevelopment. Fair Share Housing Center has gone on record as saying it's 25% of unmet need. Well, if our unmet need is 327, they are suggesting that our plan has to address 61 additional units. That's roughly what 25% of 327 is. It doesn't seem likely that that's the correct interpretation, only because if you've already proven that you don't have enough vacant land or land to enable that level of development, why would the legislature then turn around and say, irrespective of the fact that you've proven your case, we're going to throw a lot more units at you? And in that instance, it's not just 61, because typically, you do inclusionary development to meet your obligation. So it would be 61 times 5, or over 300 additional units in your municipality that just has, there's no room for. So we're comfortable with our interpretation, but it's one of those issues that's not going to be decided, you know, for quite a number of months yet. So one of the questions we often get asked is what is the income limit that qualifies one for affordable housing? And I don't know if anybody could read that. Here, I have a, I know I can. Yeah, I have a. So for our housing region, we are in housing region number two. And, for example, a moderate-income, three-person household can have an income of $97,400 in income qualify for affordable housing. A two-person, low-income household could have an income of $54,150 in qualify. The regulations actually go from a household of one to an eight-person household, and they have a broad range of incomes based on that. But I always talk about a three-person household as a good, gives you a good sense of what the numbers are, would be. So the way they've defined affordable housing, if you have 80% of your region's median income, that qualifies as affordable housing, and low-income housing is 50% of your region's median income. So the housing document that we have before us is broken up into two basic sections. There's the housing element, and then there's the plan. The housing element, I'm not going to spend any time on it. It's a lot of the statistical data from the census. It provides information on, you know, population. It provides information on employment, provides information on a whole host of 2010 and 2020 census data, which may make interesting reading for some people, but if we talked about it here, I'd esterize everybody in the room, and I don't want to do that. There is one thing I do want to bring up, though, because it's kind of funny. For, the regulations also ask that you try to bring forward to a more current date in the 2020 census, and you use the American Community Survey to do that. And these are projections of what increases in population or housing stock and the like would be. And if you look at a table where they talk about what your household, your housing types are about, whether it's single-family, two-family, multifamily, or the like, there is a reference to the fact that Summit has 370 mobile homes. Now, we do point out in the text that that is obviously a mistake. They obviously carried that over from some other town. But, you know, mistakes happen. That's the most glaring one that we found, and I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention, if they saw it and were wondering what that was all about. It was clearly an error. Now, in terms of the next slide, how were the various, or the most recent housing period or round addressed? In the third round, which ends this weekend, I guess, they had projected that your obligation was for 567 units. Now, through a vacant land adjustment, like I had described earlier, we had reduced that to a 36-unit RDP, suggesting that our unmet need in the third round was 531 units. Now, the city, in a settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center, agreed to provide for that 36-unit RDP, and also address at least 50 units, or facilitate the provision of 50 units of our unmet need obligation. And on the chart before you, again, it's really unfortunate that it's too small to read, all the 36 units are identified in that slide. read, all the 36 units are identified in that slide that were used to address our RDP. It included a series of groups, group homes. It included the Sunrise Assisted Living Facility and the Medicaid beds that are associated with that. It included a Habitat for Humanity project on Morris Avenue. It included Tiger Park, Baurin Project on Morris Avenue, and a Palmer Place Inclusionary Development. In each and every one of those instances, the projects are built and completed, so we've addressed the entirety of our third-round RDP obligation. There are also two projects regarding Summit Place and Franklin Place that were also addressed.
It's a combined RDP for the third round and third round, just make sure you said that.
Oh, yes. And in point of fact, that does regard both the first and second round obligation as well as the third round RDP. The next slide shows how we are addressing the 50 units of unmet need. This is also part of the consent order with Fair Share Housing Center, which they agreed to. It includes a 100% affordable senior project, and there has been a memorandum of understanding with BCUW and Methodist Church on that, regarding that site.
Bergen County United Way, correct? BCUW, Bergen County United Way, correct?
Yes, yes. There is no formal plan for that site, but it's a possibility, this enables the possibility of it happening. At 412 Morris Avenue, there is a one-unit affordable, affordable unit that's occupied. At 146 Morris Habitat for Humanity, constructed and has filled, a 12-unit project. At 123 to 127 Summit Avenue, there's a three units of family affordable units which are occupied. At 557, 565 Morris, there is a 46-unit project of which seven affordables are there that has been approved but not yet built. There's a Our House project contemplated as a future group home somewhere in the municipality, and we have an agreement with Our House for them to find such a site for special needs housing. And then we also have in the planning phase, St. Teresa's 100% affordable project of 11 units, which is, I said, in the planning phase. Now, that leads us to the fourth round obligation. Now, as I had said, our prospective need number was for 345 units. We have reduced that to an 18-unit RDP through a vacant land adjustment. In addition to that, we have a rehabilitation obligation that was set at 59 units, but through a structural condition survey with the construction official in the municipality, we have reduced that to a 10-unit obligation, which we are dealing with through our housing trust fund. Now, because the city has received a vacant land adjustment in the third round, we are entitled to rely on that established RDP. We don't have to recount any vacant sites or any of the sites that were included at that time. So for the fourth round, we just have to look at any changed circumstances. And for the RDP calculation itself, we looked at a site, a vacant site on Friertuck Circle. We looked at a site at 53 and 47 Shunpike Road. We included the Summit Firehouse site. 190 River Road, we included as a change circumstance. And we also talked about the Harmon Holdings site. Now, we used a presumptive minimum density of anywhere from 6 to 12 units to the acre, consistent with the regulations, and came up with, you know, what that total was, and you take 20% of that figure to figure out what our RDP is. Now, having included these sites in our RDP calculation, we are not obligated to zone those particular sites. We could take that number and distribute them anywhere we see fit, and that's what we have done. Now, for context, because I know there's always a concern about, you know, how is this RDP calculation being used around the state or around Summit? So we looked at all the adjoining municipalities in Summit. There are seven municipalities that abut your border. And in one instance, Berkeley Township, they did not ask for a vacant land adjustment. But in all six other municipalities, they have asked for substantial vacant land adjustments. For example, Chatham Borough was assigned by DCA a 181-unit obligation. Their RDP is for five units. Chatham Township, DCA gave them 156 units. They had a four-unit RDP. Milburn had a 550-unit DCA number. That was reduced to a seven-unit RDP. Mountainside Borough had 171 units assigned by DCA. They have a zero RDP in their housing plan. Same with New Providence. They were given 210 units. They have a zero-unit RDP. And Springfield had 284 units given to them. They had a 13-unit RDP. So if we just look at those six towns that reduced their number, they were given by the DCA a total of 1,552 units of obligation, and that was reduced to 29 units in total. That's about a 1.9% portion of that total obligation that they were initially given. On the other hand, where we've reduced our 345 to 18 units, that's about a 5%, 5% of the total, 345, just to give you a sense of where we fit in. Now, in terms of satisfying that RDP, we've identified five different projects. We have one Summit Place, the Summit, excuse me, at 708 to 710 Springfield Avenue. They are constructed and occupied and approved by the courts, a four-unit family project. Secondly, at 785 Springfield Avenue, there's two units of family units. We get one bonus credit for rental housing, so we're getting three credits from that that is also constructed and occupied. At 545 Morris Avenue, we have five units of family units there which are constructed and occupied, but they're rentals, so we get two rental bonus credits for a total of seven credits. At 86 Park Avenue, there's two units of family units. They're rentals, we get one bonus credit. That's also constructed and occupied. And then there's Harmon Holdings at Broad and Ashwood and Morris Avenue. Now, there, we're talking about a 20-unit project with four units of affordable housing in it. Now, that site already has an overlay zone attached to it, and that overlay zone, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, is designed for about 23,000 square feet of space?
Well, just to clarify, it's not currently an overlay zone, but it has existing zoning that would allow.
No, excuse me.
Right. The existing zoning would allow, as of right, essentially, most, much of the project as proposed, from a density perspective, from a height perspective, from a bulk standards perspective.
Okay, thank you for that.
Chair?
So.
Yes.
Can we, I just want to make sure that the public understands the as of right, the 23,000. I just, I think it's important to educate the public on, on that number.
Yeah, the current zoning of that property allows.
Can you talk to the micro properties?
Yes, right. So the majority of the site.
I'm just going to swear you in, Mr. Barrens, as well. Do you swear to God or affirm testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And I know you're a planner as well, licensed in the state of New Jersey. You're our planner, along with Mr. Burgess, and you work with him together, correct?
That's right.
Thank you, please proceed.
Very good, thank you. Good evening, Tom Barrens, a planner with Burgess Associates. So to address the issue of the Harmon Holdings site, right? So a portion of the site is located in the NB zone, which is the neighborhood business zone, which allows mixed-use development. It allows non-residential uses, a list of non-residential uses on the first floor and residential above, as of right. So somebody could build there today using that zoning framework. And as far as the actual dimensional requirements or bulk requirements, as we refer to them, they tend to be fairly relaxed as they currently exist, meaning that there are no setback requirements, so the building could be as close as zero feet to, I believe it's the front, side, and rear lot lines of that particular site. In this case, the development has actually pushed the building back in some respects to allow for some space from the residential units to the west, I believe it is, and to allow for some landscaping in certain areas. I believe the building, or, excuse me, the development as proposed is also significantly less from an impervious coverage standpoint. It provides sufficient parking to accommodate the residential units and the, the non-residential aspect of it. The, the building, at least the concept, so first of all, there's no plan per se. There's a zoning framework that's included in the plan, right? So the subsequent step is that there'd be an ordinance that would be adopted, and then based on that ordinance, the developer would go to the planning board, which are both public processes, with a formal plan to vet the actual, how the site would be constructed. So the concept that we've built a zoning framework around has the building setback at least 47 feet from the residential property to the west. So, so it was taken into consideration that, you know, we try to minimize any impacts to that adjacent, you know, corridor of single-family homes that exists there. And really, the only deviations from the existing zoning ordinance are a bit over on the floor area ratio by a few thousand square feet, as well as the building coverage, really to facilitate the parking necessary for development. I would also acknowledge that the original proposal was for 33 units in a 100% residential project, and that had been modified over time because the feedback originally from the Mount, the city's Mount Laurel Subcommittee was that, that it was way off, not even close to the city's zoning. So the thought was, you know, why don't you try to see what you could do to come back closer to the city's zoning? And when we finally got their last offer as part of this fourth-round vetting process, at that point, it was brought to the public's attention for, for comment, and that was the last meeting. And again, that was the point at which the city had received the developer's really last offer for consideration as to whether or not it would be included in the plan. So again, we've gone from 33 units to 20, 20 units, which is almost a 50% reduction in the number of residential units. If the building were to be built as of right today, you'd get a little over 23,000 square feet, which if you translated that to about 1,000 gross, 1,000 square feet of gross floor area per unit, you could build about 23 units as of right, again. And I would also offer that by limiting the amount of non-residential use, often those, those uses as listed, as permitted in the zone, tend to be more intense, meaning that they have higher rates of parking turnover, and because the list is so expansive, you could have uses there as of right that might be less desirable, frankly. And I believe that, at least based on the conceptual designs that have been presented as part of the process, that the developer is interested in constructing a building that's, that fits with the character of Summit and in accordance with the development regulations ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay. The only other item that I want to talk about is the components to address unmet need. As I said, that's the difference between 345 and the 18. It's 327 units. We are not obligated to address the entirety of that. This has historically been referred to as an aspirational number, and you have to identify the fact that you're trying to achieve some component of that. The experience historically has been, towns are usually dealing with about 30% of that number, if that. In this instance, we have a number of sites that have been identified as potential. Probably the most significant one is we do identify the fact that the Summit Housing Authority property was included in this list. The reason why we've included it in this list is if the Summit Housing Authority ever wants to relinquish the residency preference that is now imposed, they could then apply for state funding and be, they would then have access to literally millions of dollars of potential funding. Putting it on this list does not change the status of the residency, residential preference, but it certainly facilitates the ability of the housing authority, if this were ever to change, that they would have immediate access to some significant funds. As it stands now, the state does not give funds without being part of a housing plan. Theoretically, the plan can be changed in the future to designate it as such, but as I've said to other municipalities in similar situations, do it here while you can because you don't know who's going to control things tomorrow, and this way at least you've given the, the housing authority as much flexibility as possible. So with that, I do want to talk about the next steps. Because, as I said at the outset, you are obligated, if you want to protect yourself from any potential affordable housing litigation, you are obligated to adopt a document by the end of this month. The governing body is also obligated, and I believe they're scheduled for this tomorrow, to simply adopt a resolution endorsing this plan. Throughout the state, that is not the subject of discussion because the housing plan is a planning board document, not a governing body document. So typically, there's no public discussion on the endorsement. The public discussion takes place here, and we'll start, I guess, when I'm finished. As I had said previously, following that, there's two months where we have to wait to see what objections may arise, and then, beginning in September, the, the retired judges come back into play and start reviewing any disputes. And presumably, I'll be working with them on towns that I do not represent, so I won't be doing that for you. And that's basically the plan. It's fairly straightforward. I think you're in a good position. I would like to say that our vacant land adjustment and RDP analysis was done in a conservative way to make sure that it should pass critical assessment by others, and we're comfortable with the numbers that we have presented. Will they hold up in the end? You know, they might get adjusted a bit, and that sometimes happens, but we're very comfortable with the process as we've dealt with it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So what I would suggest, unless the board has questions, I would open it up to the public. I will be taking notes as to the questions they, or comments they make, and then I may come back and then respond.
Okay.
You can say that.
You want to do public?
Well, yeah, I think, I think we're going to start with planning board.
But that's what I thought, but you just said something else.
The, the, and as I understood it, Madam Chair, please correct me if I'm wrong, but planning board members may have some questions for Mr. Burgess and/or Mr. Barrens and/or Ms. Hope.
That's right.
And the remote possibility of me as well. The, the, and then if I understand correctly from our discussion prior, the process would be, maybe after a short break, that members of the public will be sworn individually so that you have the opportunity to ask questions and/or make comments, whatever you wish, one, the other, or both, and in an efficient and effective way, Mr. Barrens, excuse me, Mr. Burgess and Mr. Barrens, you know, we'll keep track of all the questions, all the comments, as will the board members, and I understand the chair will be directing, as appropriate, the vast majority, if not all, of the questions to Mr. Burgess for response because he has the plan, or it is a planning document, and that is what is being adopted by the planning board this evening, notwithstanding the fact that it has implications for the city as a whole, and the city as a whole is responsible for the constitutional obligation to satisfy the prospective need obligation for the 10th round. So that's my understanding of the process. Would that be accurate, Madam Chair?
Thank you.
Yes.
Good, I got it right.
Do any of the planning board members, Mr. Stark?
Joe, can you educate the public on if we don't file a plan by the 30th, what are the ramifications of losing immunity with the state?
The ramifications are drastic. In other In other instances where that has happened, developers who may have proposed a hundred units in one place came back to propose two or three hundred units. I think the most critical case was the Inglewood Cliffs case, where they not only lost their ability to prepare their own housing plan, that they turned it over to a special master who prepared the plan for them, and because they were so deficient in the way they approached the issue, that the court also took away their power to even review the site plans for those sites, and it was the special master that reviewed those plans and approved them on behalf of the municipality. It's a critical step, you know, especially where we have certain sites that we included for RDP purposes, as we are required to do so, but did not include them in the plan. Such developers, you know, are, I'm sure, will be taking a very critical look at how you proceed, and if you don't do things according to the legislation, you know, you may see them come back with much greater size projects than they initially even contemplated.
Ms. Home?
I have a question for Joe and maybe Augusto. Do you have any experience with other towns releasing their residency requirements for their low-income housing, and what has that done to turnover, or what effect does that have to someone who already lives in that unit? I'm assuming none, but...
I am only familiar with one other municipality that had a residential preference, and they eliminated it because they wanted access to that money that I referred to. The residents didn't move, weren't forced to move out. They could stay, but when they moved out, then those units had to become available to the housing, you know, the region.
So, was there more turnover than you would expect? Less, the same?
No, there was, there was not a lot of turnover at all because those that had that original preference weren't being forced to move out. It was just when they moved out that the unit would become available to, you know, the region at large. There's been a limited number of such units that had been, that had turned over, and it was a mixture of local residents who got the unit anyway. And I would say it was a fifty-fifty split between a handful of units that became available that were still, you know, continued, when the changeover occurred, continued to be occupied by the local, the town residents versus people from outside the town.
I think, Ms. Home, you wanted to add to that?
Yes, so I...
Just for the record, I'm not going to swear on Ms. Home. She's an officer of the court. She's the Affordable Housing Attorney for the City of Summit. Please.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. So, I represent the City of Hackensack, where we actually had this approved by the court in round three. The Hackensack Housing Authority, we entered into an agreement with them that, at a date in the future, because you have to advertise the units, so we picked four months in the future from the date of the agreement. We advertised that these units were going to be, were going to become available effective, let's say it was October thirty-first, of whatever year that was. I don't remember the date, though, so I'm just making one up. What happened between the time that we executed the agreement and October thirty-first was it was advertised. Everyone that's already on the list for the Housing Authority stays on the list. They just don't get automatically pushed to the top of the list anymore. So, what happens is everyone who's on the list, who was a majority of residents in Hackensack, stayed on the list, and then it was advertised so new people could apply for those units. Then, they take the list and they randomize it, so it's a lottery. And what happens is any vacancy after that date in the future, so let's say November first, if there's a vacancy on November first, all you do is use the new randomized list. So, no one, no one's removed from their, from their unit if they already live there. It's a matter of when, when that turnover occurs, and historically, I don't know the turnover rate within Summit, but it's, you know, it takes a while. So, but all that was required was that we just now use this new list, and that's the only, that's the only difference that would be the removal of the residency preference. But no one gets kicked off the list. They just, it may be that they get jumbled up and it's, they're no longer number one. They might be number five, or they might be, you know, so that's, that's how that process works.
In simple terms, the preference is removed.
Correct.
But not the people.
Correct, yes.
Did anybody else have any question?
Joe, if you could just touch base on a couple of things. Looking at your timeline, I just wanted for matter of public record to include, we did have two listening sessions, which were, I think it was April twenty-ninth for the planning board?
April twenty-fifth, I think it was, and May twenty-ninth.
May twenty-ninth. So, just for matter of public record, we did have two public listening sessions for those. But can you talk a little bit about how other municipalities have been handling this process? And this has been expedited?
I will tell you, you are unusual in that, the fact that you had those too. Most municipalities, the first time the public is learning of the plan is when it gets filed for the public hearing ten days before the hearing. And coming to the planning board for the hearing is the first time they've ever gotten the chance to talk to the board about it. And the reason for that is that when the courts took over the system, it became a legal issue, and I'll let the lawyers in the room talk about that.
Always blame the lawyers.
I love blaming the lawyers. But all of a sudden, it became a legal issue with the potential for litigation. And once there's the potential for litigation, that's when boards had, and governing bodies had to go into closed session because you had to discuss potential litigation, and that was the problem. So, the fact that you had two open sessions before the public hearing, in my experience, and as I said, we were doing forty-three of these things for towns, no one's done that. No one's had that before.
Right, and I think that's important for the public to understand that, that these matters were of litigation, and, and as Mr. Burgess said, you know, that is why these discussions have to happen with...
May I supplement that answer?
Yes.
Having similar, a little less than forty-three experience myself in other municipalities, I would concur with Mr. Burgess that the City of Summit has been exemplary in the magnitude and the frequency of getting all stakeholders involved, including, most important stakeholder respectively, well, everyone here just about, the residents of the City of Summit. So, and I will not name all the other municipalities that I'm involved in, having now said that the City of Summit stands above all the rest, but then hopefully, they're not watching, or I'm in trouble. But, elsewhere at least, but, but it is a fact, so, and they'd have to recognize that fact, and I'd say it's also, as I think we're all too painfully aware, it's not just the fact that it was litigation, but also the fact that the statute required quite a bit of the municipalities, as well as even the judiciary, to do quite a bit in a extraordinarily, if not ridiculously compressed timeframe. So, when you hear things like in Joe's example earlier this evening of another municipality, they actually didn't have their order from the court establishing their number in time, they got it after they adopted their plan to satisfy the number, literally. It was, the cart came before the horse. So, the legislature did what the legislature did, the way they did it, and the municipalities and the judicial system, frankly, had very little, if any, ability to do anything other than abide by it, including these arguably draconian compressed timeframes.
Yeah, if I could just add to that, because I've always said that a housing element in fair share plan will typically take six to nine months to prepare. The state gave us three, basically, three and a half months to do that. And on top of it, they then turned around and said, and every municipality in the state has to do it within that three and a half months period, which, you know, we've got a lot of planners in our staff, and I would say everybody was working six and seven days a week since April. It's been an experience.
I'm sorry for the interruption. I didn't even ask for the chair's permission, so I apologize to everybody.
No, that's okay. That's all. Do you have any other questions?
No, not right now.
I just, I want to just correct the, I think, the dates for the listening sessions. The April date was the twenty-eighth, just to be...
Correct, and May twenty-ninth. Right.
I heard twenty-fifth.
Yeah, yeah. Twenty-eighth and, yeah. Yeah. Any other questions? I have a question. So, you mentioned that we could still change the plan after the thirtieth.
Correct, yes.
Your, your strong advice is keep your immunity. This is a compliant plan. You know, we understand what not having immunity...
That is the single, most critical thing I could try to impress upon everybody, adopt this plan. And then, based on what we hear from the public, you know, it may be that we'll, over the summer, you know, whatever, we'll, we could amend it if need be.
Right, so that's my question. Can you share the process and, and how do we modify the plan? Maybe it's very simple, but to know what we can do if we, you know, we're going to hear a lot of good ideas tonight probably, and although this is a great plan, you know, it, what, how do we make any changes if we want to do so?
It's very simple. It's the same process that started this process. You know, we would evaluate what's being said, you know, when, when I'm back, you know, we'll talk about, you know, what made sense and what might not, and then you'll decide which ones you might want to include in the plan that are not now in the plan. Then, you have the ten-day notice requirement. You might want to have another session before you adopt, to have a public discussion about it. But then, once you notice, it's a ten-day notice requirement, and then you have your public hearing, and it would play out just like this.
Great, okay.
If I may, also, it's dovetailing. I didn't bother to mention it specifically. It's in the record, though, we did, of course, provide at least the requisite notice, both via publication, as well as submission to the adjoining clerks, the State Office of Planning Advocacy in Trenton, and the Union County Planning Board notice and, and opportunity to review, as well as copies of, in most cases, the plan. And there'll be a formal process after action by this board thereafter involving those same parties. So, since Mr. Burgess mentioned the notice, I didn't want anybody to wonder. It's been proved, and we have the affidavits and all the documentation of sufficient notice for this public hearing this evening.
Thank you. Great. Okay, so do you need a break?
Let me take a few minutes.
Okay, so let's take a five-minute break. Well, is five minutes sufficient? No.
I think we should just keep pushing. Public comment, right?
Do you want to do public comment and then take a break?
We're going to, I thought you were going to take a five-minute break.
I thought so. I just, Joe's been on his feet and...
Oh, yeah. I just, I thought the public was going to come up and ask their questions.
Yeah, we're going to do public comment and, and public questions after the break. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Oh, I have to do this. Oh, I have to do this.
...in 10 years, and those units, if renovated, would have a new useful life and could meet the entire fifth round obligation. So by doing the Firehouse site, taking the housing authority, not doing anything to them now, because if you encumber them in any way now with any special deed restrictions, they cannot be refinanced in 10 years. This is a smart way to plan for affordable housing, long-term, strategic, utilizing city-owned land that would leverage state and federal funds to create a meaningful amount of affordable housing without mega developments and ongoing litigation. Or you can adopt the housing element before you and look forward to more litigation, overdevelopment, bad press, and possibly losing control over how affordable housing is created in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up and make comments? Hello?
Hi.
Make sure the mic's really there, because the mics are not very good. At home, just so they can hear you at home.
Hello, hello? Okay.
Name and address, please.
Risa Gorlik, 9 Russell Place. Dr. Risa Gorlik.
Do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
The city has known for months about the June 30th deadline and chose not to discuss this with the public. I spoke with my neighbors last night on Russell Place. No one was aware that this project, less than a block from our homes, was being discussed tonight. The assumption is the planning board would push this through quickly, as it has on previous projects in this area, because there's a special council meeting tomorrow in order to approve a plan for five, to be approved at 5:00 tomorrow. According to the city website, over half of the affordable housing in Summit is in East East Summit is a small portion of the map of Summit. It's in the pink. Fifty percent of the affordable housing is in this area. This is unfair and undue burden, and it must stop. My neighbors and I are tired of overdevelopment, especially in East Summit, where almost every single-family property or vacant property that becomes available in the market is redeveloped into multifamily homes. The only way we hear about these homes before they are built is that they need to have a number of variances approved by the zoning board first. In the past few years, there were variances pushed through quickly for among a number of places, including Seven Russell Place, the large lot by Jefferson School and the Summit Pool, Habitat for Humanity, the large multifamily building on Park Avenue buttressing Broad Street next to the laundromat, six townhomes built on two single-family lots on Ashwood, which is catty-corner to our backyard and now blocks our sunsets. Sunsets aside, no one has looked at traffic. In the 16 years I have lived on Russell Place, they've never had a traffic study. Russell Place is a cut-through to and from Jefferson School. Additionally, the traffic lights on Morris Ashwood and Broad Ashwood are impossible to get through at this point. Adding 20 additional units with probably 40 or more drivers will impact the area's traffic in a negative way and make our daily lives harder to manage for anyone who needs to drive through this part of town. It is unsafe. Adding more multifamily units will increase traffic and create more safety hazards. But the biggest safety hazard issue, the biggest safety issue to me is the environmental impact of the chemicals used by dry cleaners, many of which are carcinogenic, and the remediation that would be required to address this issue along with the costs. Remediating a former dry cleaning site can be particularly complex due to legacies of chlorinated solvents, especially PCE slash PERC, which often contaminate soil and groundwater. So I ask, has anyone done an environmental study? If so, we need to see this and we need time to review it. Today, I researched at NJIT where I teach, and I found, quote, "If you live on the first or second floor of an apartment building that is above or next to a dry cleaner, you may be exposed to dry cleaning chemicals, which can affect your health." Additionally, I learned, quote, "Improper handling of these chemicals and equipment can lead to leaks that may pollute natural elements on or near the property. This contamination may outlast the shop's existence and can make it a challenge for the land to be redeveloped for other uses," end quote. The dry cleaner on this property has been there for decades. Nobody knows what has been dumped. According to NYC.gov's website, quote, "Released into the ground in quantity, dry cleaning solvents contaminate the soil and groundwater for a long time. The contamination can last tens to hundreds of years." Tens to hundreds of years. The vapors from these solvents can also intrude into buildings. Dry cleaning solvents can threaten human health mainly by contaminating indoor air and drinking water. The New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection has a dry cleaner remediation program. Have they been contacted? A few months ago, Summit made the national news when it proposed arresting those who were unhoused for sleeping on benches. The optic did not play out well for one of the wealthiest towns in New Jersey. I'm sure I'm not the only one whose friends called me and said, "Hey, don't you live in that town that I saw on the news that wants to arrest homeless people?" Now it appears we want to build housings, only four of which are affordable, over what could amount as a potential super site. I can see the headlines now, and the news stories will say Summit is at it again. I urge you not to approve this project. Go back to the old Firehouse site, which was already vetted for such a project and can accommodate way more than four affordable units, and build something there where there is infrastructure already in place. It is near downtown and the train lines, so it will impact traffic less, and most importantly, it won't be built on what is most likely a contaminated parcel of land in a already overdeveloped East Summit. I believe the mayor and the Republican Party are running this campaign on not to overdevelop Summit. Stop doing it in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Name and address, please?
Mark Kohler, 13 Russell Place.
I'm sorry, last name again?
Kohler, like the toilet, K-O-H-L-E-R. Every time you flush, I get a nickel. If only you're mature.
You want to wait five minutes? Okay. And I'll swear here. It's not going to cost a nickel, I promise, not even a penny. Do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. As I said, I live at 13 Russell Place. I don't like to call it East Summit. To me, it's divisive. I like to say just down the hill. To me, we're all one city or one town, and we can find solutions together that suit all of us. With the deadline a week away, as I learned tonight, I just learned about the project yesterday. As I've heard tonight, the deadline is a week away. It sounds like this plan is going to be approved, but at the same time, I'd like to implore each and every single one of you to please, as we were told, you can revisit after the fact, and I think it very badly needs to be revisited. As Risa was just saying, we have way, way overdeveloped our part of town. We are a town of, if I'm correct by Mr. Google told me, 6.04 square miles. A lot of the development that's taken place has been, excuse me, my phone just shut off on me, has been done by us. I think that we can spread that out some. I think, first off, the space that they're talking, the Harmon Holdings project, has many issues. I just heard tonight that the developer originally wanted 33 units instead of 20, and I actually laughed in my seat. I don't know if you're familiar with the space. It is sandwiched between Morris going up and Broad going up the other way. It's a small space. If you come down and look at it, I'll gladly walk it with any of you. I don't see how they're going to fit that development there with the commercial space, with all the units, with parking. There is no parking if there are commercial spaces. There's no parking on the streets anywhere near there. If they can't fit in that lot, I don't see where they're going. More than that, in this area, there is a lot of traffic. On many school days, Ashwood Avenue heading to Broad Morris is backed up all the way to Michigan Avenue. Ashwood goes right up to Jefferson School. I walk my son to school every day. I see the traffic every day. If it's rush hour, if parents are dropping their kids at school, it's four to five blocks that cars are waiting, and yes, they do cut through Russell Place as a way around it, and that'll be backed up many days, too. So you're just going to have the construction, you're going to have the building, you're going to have cars backed up. It's going to just exacerbate a problem that's already bad. As you continue up Morris, past Ashwood, the next turn is Glen Side. Glen Side is the road that takes you to 78. It's another cut-through. The cars come through town, they go right up Morris, they turn on Glen Side, and they head to 78. On any day that there's an accident, if it's 24 or 78, you're not moving in that part of town. The cars are going down Broad, they're going up Morris, and they're bumper-to-bumper, and it will take you forever to get through. And once again, that development is sandwiched right in between those two roads. With construction going on, I can imagine just that in and of itself is going to be a nightmare. Now, I'm not sure if Risa mentioned, but at the intersection of Ashwood and Morris, there have been several accidents in the past. There was, the house on the corner there had hedges in the front when I moved in about seven years ago. Those hedges are now gone because of cars colliding at that intersection. A couple of them went right into the hedges. It's just that much more with these additional units that's going to make it that much harder for people to navigate. Now, also today, as most of you probably know, was the first day of camp at the community center. So you had 200 people dropping their kids off at the community center for camp today. One more traffic issue in that area that we're going to have to deal with. Kenview is now open, and people are working there. That's another issue, more cars that are in the area now. This development is going into a very small space. It's being squeezed in, and it's just, it's going to be bursting at the seams. There's no way to get around it. Now, the other issue is the housing developments. Again, we're 6.4, 6.04 square miles in town. I'm all for affordable housing. We have a unit at Seven Russell Place. We're bookended on the other side by a unit, 31 Russell Place, I believe you said earlier. There are two units there. It's a perfect place for it. It's next to the old train tracks. There are two units. They fit in very well. Now, what's happening here is, again, I see that this developer wants to do this. He wants to put in his 20 units and says, "Okay, I'll make four of them affordable." But even, I don't care if they're affordable or not, it just does not seem like the right place for it. And again, right across the street, we have Habitat for Humanity, almost exactly across the street from where these units went, and you know what a fiasco that was last year when those units are going up with the neighbors on Ashwood Court. I don't think we need that again with another big development going in there. So I'm just going to implore you again, come down, look at the space, take a look at it and see for yourselves. There's just no room. Come during rush hour, you might not make it there too soon, but I'm more than, I'm more than happy to welcome you. If it's a day like today, I will make lemonade. I'll have my son sell it to you for a quarter. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Hello, Bonnie Morrison, Rotary Drive.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to God or affirm testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. I just have a couple of questions, as the gentleman right before me, as well as earlier in the presentation. I just want to confirm that if this plan is approved tonight, there will still be an opportunity for the Harmon Holdings develop, potential development on Ashwood, to go before the planning board and have a formal public hearing, at least planning or zone, and/or zoning? I'm not sure. If we could just get more clarification on that, I'd appreciate that. Second question, we've, many of us have heard, been hearing about Milburn for a couple of years and all that they've been going through, and I just want to get a little clarification how Summit is different from Milburn in dealing with builder remedy lawsuits and how this plan, you know, affects that one way or the other. What else? And with this plan, do we feel that Summit can remain control of our development destiny and be able to stop overdevelopment? That's, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Pull the mic up. Yeah, there you go.
Just going to hold it. Tom Zieber, 768 Springfield Avenue, Apartment A3.
Please raise your right hand, just in case, any comments. Do you swear to God or affirm testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Just two questions. It's been my understanding that if the city files its plan by June 30th, it'll have immunity from builder's remedy lawsuits. Can you clarify whether my understanding is correct? And assuming that I am correct, I understand that while Summit would be immune from builder's remedy lawsuits by filing that report, the plan could still be challenged by an interested party. Can you explain the difference between a builder's remedy lawsuit and a challenge to the city's plan? Actually, I guess it's three questions. I have one, one other one. And also, can you confirm how many and what developments were excluded from the housing element and fair share plan, the density of those projects, and why they were excluded? I think that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. The second question was just assuming that I am correct about my understanding that the city would be immune from builder's remedy lawsuits by filing by June 30th. I was asking just if you could explain the difference between a builder's remedy lawsuit and a challenge to the city's plan.
He asked, can they still be, can the plan still be challenged even though?
And what's the difference between the two terms?
Filing the plan by June 30th maintains the immunity. And then the difference between the two.
Thank you.
Sure.
And how many developments were considered? You got that.
And excluded, and why?
I could read my writing.
It could be worse, Joe. You could be trying to read my writing.
Welcome.
Okay, I was going to take your name and address first.
Julia Conley, 25 Pearl Street.
I appreciate the desire to be sworn in. Do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
So my question, a few, is, do I understand it that the new?
I don't know if they'll hear you at home if you're not a little closer. Little closer. It's a terrible mic.
Okay.
Is, do I understand it correctly that the zoning has already been changed to this MBC? It's already been done? That's, we have this new zoning in that area?
Well, if you're referring to the Firehouse site, that zoning is in compliance.
No, no, I'm referring to where we are.
The Harmon Holdings?
Yeah.
That zoning has not occurred at this point.
It's not changed.
NBC overlay zone.
The overlay zone is not done yet.
NBC.
Well, I just said that the Firehouse site is now.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. One question at a time from the person who's at the podium.
I think we're collecting questions. If you don't understand the question, then you can comment and get clarity on the question. But right now, we're just going to collect them all, and then you guys are going to make sure you have all the answers.
I guess I should say then, currently, it's a, it's a neighborhood business and an R5 zone. That's what I know it as now. So you're looking to change that.
You're talking about the Harmon site?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's currently the zoning.
And it's the new zoning already. Is that correct or no?
The current zoning is NB and R5.
Okay. So when you, you know, change it, I just don't understand if this is, I looked at a chart, and it doesn't seem to me like this is in compliance with that zone. So that's my question there.
So we can talk to the zoning changes?
Right. It's not in compliance to these numbers.
The differences.
Yes, yes. And then, just on the heels of everybody else, I mean, I live in this neighborhood, and talking about the traffic, it, you can't talk about a nightmare. You can't, you're there 20 minutes. I take my grandchildren to school, and it's a nightmare. You can't get in and out. And currently, we have another situation where there's overcrowding and people are parking, which you're not allowed to park on the street, but we have that issue that we've been trying to deal with the city.
Yeah.
And they're, they have no place to park. So you're going to build another site where this, I just can't imagine, on the main street, coming in a, you know, leaving out and going onto a county road? It's just, it's incongruous, I think, for the neighborhood. And as everybody said, that the, all the low-income, not that I have any problem with it, but it's all designated and relegated to one area in town. So I don't think that the site really works for where we are. And with the intensity of the building, it's just not going to work. So that's my feeling.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm Fritz Alum. I live at 9 Russell Place. Risa's my wife. Mark's my neighbor.
Would you raise your right hand, Mr. Alum? Do you swear to? You got it right. Do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed with your questions and/or comments.
The folks at home won't hear you if you don't get closer.
I'm sorry. Let me raise it, too. Yeah, I, I don't have a whole lot to add, other than, you know, if I had to pick a site in East Summit, sorry to use East Summit, in East Summit, a worse site to put something like this, I'm not sure I could come up with one. Because, I mean, you know, you've heard it. The traffic's awful. There hasn't been a traffic study there. I don't know if there has ever been any sort of traffic study, you know, any sort of impact study with all this overdevelopment, all this multifamily housing that's gone in there. Add that the environmental issues associated with a 60-year-old or 70-year-old dry cleaning business. I mean, I'm not sure you could pick a worse site. So I like the plan that Mr. White presented earlier. I mean, I'm really interested why, on any of these charts that we saw, the old Firehouse site is not even in consideration evidently. So I'm very interested in understanding why that is. If we have this obligation, we've got a place to put them. I don't know. I, it just, I'm, I'm interested in the feedback from the planning board and the council and the mayor.
Thank you. Hello?
Hello. Rick Whipple, 30 Golden Road.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to God or affirm testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
All right. As mentioned, I'm Rick Whipple. I serve as the vice chair of the Summit Housing Authority and as the SHA liaison to the Summit Affordable Housing Committee. First, I wanted to thank the planning board and the city for the hard work putting this plan together. We do think it's appropriate that SHA be involved in the plan and appreciate the city, including us, to help preserve our flexibility in terms of future funding channels. SHA and the city have worked together for years, and we thank, again, thanks Summit for the $700,000 in rehabilitation funds in 2022 for new windows for our family units. For clarity, the plan being discussed tonight includes 170 of SHA's 195 units in the Round Four Unmet Need Table, representing 60% of the city's 327-unit gap. At this point, I'd like to raise a process concern around the plan. Our first notice that our units would be included was when we saw the plan publicly posted on the city website. I'd have expected the, that our chair or executive director would have been contacted in advance, especially given the history of the city erroneously including SHA units in prior published affordable housing reports. I'd like to stress that we've been in direct discussions with the city over the last few months. On May 20th, we had a joint meeting and reviewed each party's interests and many of the angles associated with potentially including some of our house, our units in the city's counts. But for clarity, at no point in, at no time in that was there any discussion of the majority of our units being included in the plan. And multiple city attendees went so far as to say that their focus in these discussions was on improving conditions for the residents rather than on the fair share numbers. The removal of the SHA residency restriction was not raised as either a priority or a request in our discussion. After the meeting, we provided four specific options for the city's consideration. City has yet to respond. No agreements have been made, but we're still working together to come up with ideas. I'd like to close out my comments tonight, highlighting two explicit concerns with the report. The first is very straightforward. On page 41, the report states that the city has collaborated with the SHA to create two Tiger Baron Affordable Housing Units. We're not sure who the city worked with, but the SHA has not been involved with these units, so this is a factual error that should be corrected. Secondly, the plan admits some very relevant details, such as the fact that any SHA units included in the city's fair share counts would no longer be eligible for rehabilitation credits. It also implies that the city and SHA are working together to remove residency restrictions across all our properties. While this is something that's been raised, it's never been seriously discussed, and it's not something currently being worked on. As Dennis White just mentioned a few minutes ago, we need to consider our long-term funding needs, including an update to our RAT agreement in 10 years, 2035, aligned with the end of Round Four. It would benefit the city to also take a long-term view and work with the SHA to meet our mutual needs and be strategic in our actions, including any removal of the residency preference and/or, and any potential distribution of Affordable Housing Trust funds. The SHA does have a vested interest in increasing and improving affordable housing in Summit, and we're committed to partner with the city in doing so. That said, the plan inaccurately represents the state of our discussions, fails to consider certain vital interests of the SHA, or acknowledged some negative implications of the plan's recommendations, and contradicts information that was verbally provided to the SHA in prior discussions. Thanks for hearing our concerns and for considering appropriate updates to the plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hi. Chantal Landman, Beekman Road.
I'm sorry, one more time.
Chantal Landman, L E N D, A M A N, on Beekman Road.
Okay. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to God or affirm testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. Good evening. I would like to address the board regarding process, communication, and public input. The deadlines associated with the plan shared on June 13th and being discussed tonight were not a surprise. The city has known for many months, arguably years, that this deadline was looming and that a comprehensive credible plan was required, yet no draft plans were shared with the public for input until 10 days ago. If you refer to the minutes, the listening sessions that you referenced in April and May were not that. In April, Mr. Barron said the planners, quote, "will present a draft" at the May meeting. In May, the board shared two, quote, "conceptual building developments," which were not shared in advance with the public. Review of the draft housing plan happened in closed session that night. In order to meet the deadline, you will vote on the plan tonight, meaning there is no chance feedback from the public will be considered in the plan. We will submit to the state, because there's just no time to do that. We need a real commitment to listening, consistently, openly, and without delay in the future. So what's the plan for the challenge period? We all know the dates, so when will the planning board present a revised plan to Summit residents that incorporates public feedback? Will we have multiple opportunities to revise the plan? Will the planning board have opportunity to change the plan after August? Let's not make this challenge period opaque and rushed, as we just did with the step concluding tonight. Finally, can you explain how to develop a 100% affordable tax credit building at the Firehouse site and provide examples of similar projects? Is this a good site for this type of tax credit development?
Hello?
Hello. Blake Skollet, 105 New England Avenue.
As obliged, do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
So help me God, I do.
Thank you. I anticipated saying, "Thank you."
I have a couple of different questions. I have two, actually, about the part of the plan that fulfills the third round obligation. It was part of the, did I show the right, the first things you fulfilled that had how we were going to finish that all up.
There's a third round, and now we're talking about?
That we're going on to the fourth round, but part of that was in this document. And I, right. So the one that I have the biggest question, I'm curious about, the 11 units with the St. Teresa property that's in the planning process, I'm just curious, what level of planning, I mean, is the archdiocese kind of nodded and said, "Yep, the cardinal thinks it's a good idea"? I mean, I'm just curious, by planning process, what does that mean? Is this someone, is it an idea? Is it likely to happen? What might we know? And if it were to fall through, knowing that St. Teresa doesn't own that property outright, you know, it's owned by the whole archdiocese, and I know that no one's more complicated than the Catholic Church when it comes to anything. We Lutherans learned that when we wanted to ask a few questions. 500 years later, we're still reading. Anyhow, just curious, if that were to fall through, how, what about those 11 units? How do we, how do you actually fulfill the full requirement? How does that happen? There we go. Then looking now toward the fourth round, the future, I had a few questions. I heard the whole explanation, but I'm just sort of flummoxed that such an incredibly small amount of new housing in this plan we're proposing we could build. In the 12 years I've been in Summit, we seem to be constantly building and rebuilding and redeveloping, but that we can only imagine that that's all we're going to be able to add to the affordable housing stock in a decade. Just, I fully admit, this is not my expertise, but my excuse is sort of to advocate for the moral obligation over citizens, right? And I regularly meet with people of all economic stratas, including those who are really struggling to live here. So I just want to make sure that we're doing our best effort to live up to the law and do everything we can. So to that question of how can this be, you explained it, but I'm still struggling with it, that we got such a small amount. How is it that the one plan that would be all affordable is amongst the rejected ones on a site that we do have? Or something like it? I guess I'm just struggling to see how, we couldn't see how that would, something like that might have got us closer to that obligation. I'm just, I'm just ignorant, I guess. And I want you to help me understand, so as a good citizen, I can understand this. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tanisha Valerio. I live at 65 Broad Street.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to God or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
In addition to the comments of those before me who have expressed concerns about the Ashwood-Broad Morris location, I would like to voice a concern about the strain all of these additional units are putting on the Jefferson School. Class sizes are up significantly from 10 years ago when my oldest child was at school there. When class sizes were typically around 18 or 19, it was commonly known that they were smaller than average at the other elementary schools, primarily because we had a higher percentage of ESL students and students who had special needs. As far as I know, we still have a higher percentage of ESL students and students with special needs, but our class sizes are now in the 23, 24, maybe even 25 range, which is not an insignificant jump. Class sizes were intentionally smaller, as I said, because of those ESL and special needs students, which is, causes complication and additional requirements for the teachers, the staff, the building, all of it. And those smaller class sizes helped that to be more manageable. When so many single-family homes in our school zone are being knocked down and turned into multifamily units, that impacts the number of students that are coming to our school. It's already significantly higher than it was 10 years ago. How are 20 units, in addition to the Habitat for Humanity location and the other multiple, many, many locations in East Summit that are zoned for Jefferson, how are we going to accommodate for that? How are we going to not have that negatively impact our students, our teachers, all of the staff at Jefferson? And that was just my question, I guess. I have that major concern in addition to the other concerns about that location, which there are many.
Thank you.
Jaclyn Lasaracina, L A S A R A C I N A. I'm a resident of Summit.
Please raise your, your right hand is already raised. Do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
I share the concerns that have been shared about the Ashwood property. I believe it is imprudent and unfair to try to squeeze in additional units in an already overdeveloped, heavily trafficked part of town. But I'd like to focus on another issue that I have with the plan that's been presented. You all have chosen to interpret the state law, this 25% rule, in what I'll describe generously as an odd way. We are standing with a small number of other towns, a meaningful minority of other towns across hundreds in the state. As Mr. Burgess shared back on April 28th and again here tonight, our interpretation is very likely to be challenged in court. We are inviting, it seems, this litigation. So my question is kind of a philosophical one. If that happens, how will you respond? You know, over the past few weeks, there's been a lot of reflection on Summit's history when it comes to affordable housing, how indeed it's passed, Summit has honored its commitments and opened its doors to working families and working individuals. And that got me thinking about legacy. When you are faced with the decisions over the next several months about how to respond to a likely legal challenge, whether and how to amend the plan, I urge you not to worry about the headlines that may appear the next day, the next week, or even in five months. Instead, I would urge all of us to think about legacy. In 50 or 80 years from now, when people look back on this moment, what do we wish them to say? That rather than doing the hard work and advocating to change the law in Trenton, that we decided to take it to court and make a bet? That Summit went the way of Milburn and got locked up in a very expensive, multi-year lawsuit with the potential for a judge to make development decisions rather than our own community? And for what? To pretend to fight over development? We can do better. And I hope you will lead us down a better path. I hope that will not be our legacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello. Diego Huig, N A R Court.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to God or affirm testimony about to give is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
First, you must adopt the plan. I mean, we cannot miss the deadline. That's my comment. But I have a bunch of questions related to that. One of them, as many have alluded to, why are we having this discussion so close to the deadline? Why not have had preliminary discussions earlier as the plan was taking shape? Second, it is now clear and out in the open that the third round was actually indeed 50 units. And looking at the units that we have for the round three, we're actually very fortunate in Summit to have a Methodist church and a St. Teresa's Catholic church that provided at the very last minute almost half the units of an obligation so many even weeks ago were denying we had. So I have a similar question to what the gentleman had, which is, what is our commitment as a community to build those 23 units? What are our plans to build them? How are we going to justify putting those numbers and saying, this is a good, honest, an honest, good faith effort, when we have gone, it seems, very publicly against the doctrine, the Montclair doctrine, which, it's my understanding, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not even born in New Jersey, and maybe somebody can clarify, but it's my understanding that the Montclair doctrine was crafted over the decades by justices that were both Republican and Democrat, appointed by both Democratic and Republican governors. So we are going against settled law and we are hoping for a Hail Mary pass. I am very concerned about removing the residence preference for 195 units. Why? So when I talk to lawyers for my affairs, I ask, what is the numerical percent probability? I'm going to ask you that. What is the numerical percent probability that we will prevail in court to prevent the 198-unit building that was proposed with the Wells Fargo site? Because it seems to me that if we lose that, we will end up without the residence preference and with a 198-unit building that nobody's talking about today because it's off the plan, but somebody, a builder, who understood that we were getting close to the deadline, proposed. So what is our numerical probability of not being sued, and if we are sued, of prevailing in court on the Wells Fargo site? Related to that, what's the plan to alleviate traffic on River Road, given the 46-unit development plan for the corner of Morris and River Road, which has been approved, is my understanding? Also traffic-related, Ashwood and, you know, the area where the dry cleaners are. My kids went to Jefferson Primary Center. I wasn't at Traffic Jam for two and a half years. I'm so happy not to be in that Traffic Jam ever again. Nobody should be in that Traffic Jam. People live in that Traffic Jam. And finally, you must have some idea of changes you're already considering for this plan because it was built at the very last minute. And I think it is only fair to share with the community what those anticipated changes might be sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Marks. I live on Pearl Street.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to God or affirm testimony you're about to give?
I do.
Is it true?
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I've said it so many times this evening, you anticipated the rest. Now I'm going to have to start all over again. Do you swear to God or, I only learned it one way. Do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I still do.
Thank you again. Please proceed.
Well, thanks for your time. I just have a few questions about, sorry, I have a few questions about the process. So I just learned about this proposed building Harmon. Is that the right name of it? I think I just learned about it either last night or at some point today from a neighbor, some of the neighbors here. Exactly. And I'm a little puzzled because it seems like the worst possible location in Summit, given what all of the other speakers already said, traffic, the dry cleaner site. I understand you are the subject matter expert together with your colleague here on the other side. Is that the best that you were able to come up with out of the choices that were made available? I don't know what the other choices were. I would like to see what else was made available, what else was discussed. Have you all, and I assume the planning board members all live in Summit as well, right? Are you familiar with the corner? Did you ever walk down there? I'm surprised, I mean, you have not made your vote yet, but I'd be surprised if you agreed to pass this. It's impossible. It's one of the worst traffic spots in Summit currently, right? And by building this, you would make it just a lot worse. So I just don't understand how that can be the best choice, the one suggestion that we're discussing tonight. And I would like to, yeah, just get some answers on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question or a comment?
Hi. Ellen Boylan, Tulip Street in Summit.
Do you swear to God or affirm testimony about to give is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
So I'd just like to state at the outset that this attempt, or what's supposed to be gathering public input, really does seem like a pretense to me. You're clearly adopting the plan tonight. There is no opportunity to incorporate anything that people in the community have to say. It's certainly not good governance to vote on a plan and then make changes based on what the community thinks. So that's what I have to say about the timing of this. I think it's really anti-democratic and not responsible on your part. I have some questions for Mr. Burgess about the 25% rule that he has proposed and that you are now adopting. I have a couple of questions. One is, given how intensive the legislative process was to adopt these amendments to the Fair Housing Act that are now governing the process, how much people participated in that process? There were people in support of it. There was a great deal of opposition. It was a thoughtful process. And the system that was set up through that process is a very comprehensive system for determining prospective need and then for resolving any disputes that may come up, any challenges that may come up. So this is like a very well-thought-out piece of legislation and process. How can it be that the legislature intended that municipalities actually do less than they did before the law, which is what you are proposing with the way you read the statute, that we actually do less? Under round three, I mean, we had a vacant land analysis, we had an RDP of 36, as you said. These are not new concepts in the new law, they're old concepts. But even after the RDP, the settlement agreement provides that Summit has an obligation to build 50 new additional affordable units. RDP is not the end of the discussion. A municipality has to take steps to meet the ongoing unmet need. And what you're proposing is that, no, RDP is the end of the story. There is no more obligation, and that's what the legislature intended? That is incomprehensible. I'd also like to know, well, I'll go back to, you gave the examples of all the communities in the surrounding area that had even lower RDPs than Summit. None of those municipalities are interpreting the law the way you are. They are taking 25% of prospective need that was given to them by the DCA, and that 25% is what they are now going forward with as their affordable housing obligation. They didn't take 25% of their RDP because they realize that is not what the legislature And then my final point, I think, is how is it that you can recommend that Summit take a course of action in this plan that you yourself said in April is going to be challenged and is going to lead to litigation and won't be resolved until it reaches the appellate court level? So you're recommending that we go down this path that is going to be expensive, that's going to take time, and that is not a winner? And I'd like you to explain how that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up and make any comments or ask any questions? I'm not seeing anybody else. Oh, you are, you are. You want to come back? Okay. I thought maybe you were heading out.
I just had a couple more questions. Is that allowed?
Sure.
Discretion of the chair.
Okay. In previous affordable.
Technically, just have to give us your name and address.
Bonnie Morrison.
Thank you.
Rotary Drive.
Don't need to be re sworn in. Please proceed.
Over the last couple of years, we've talked about there was a potential of two additional affordable housing units on Ashwood Court in a tiny postage stamp area. Just wanted to know if that was still on the table at all. And finally, can we again get an explanation of why this has all been so last minute? It seems every surrounding town is going through the same thing. If you look at, tap into all of our surrounding towns, they had like 10 days' notice, and these hearings are this week, last week, whatever. So just, so we can all understand why it is last minute. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we should probably give our professionals a couple of minutes just to collect their notes, see if they can read them, like Joe. No, I'm just kidding. I know you can. Five minutes, and then we'll come back and answer all the questions. Okay. Thank you.
10, yeah.
10, okay. 10 minutes. Ten, okay. Ten minutes.
Save five, it'll become ten.
All right, all right.[564.32]
We're back. There's a lot of questions. We understand there's a lot of questions.
Good questions.
Okay, so, oh. I did hammer it.
You missed it?
We're back, okay. Thank you, board professionals. Who wants to go first?
Well, we're gonna break it up.
Okay.
Yeah, in listening to all the comments, yeah, we really tried to break it down into categories. And probably the most significant category was Harmon Holdings.
Yeah. Yeah, get it closer because people at home won't hear.
How's that?
Much better.
Okay.
So they started to say, I think there's more discussion about Harmon Holdings than any other property.
Yeah.
The way the process is required to play out, you know, anybody that comes in and presents a plan, the municipality has to entertain that concept. And that's what happened here. The discussion revolved around a couple of different things, but probably the most significant was the fact that under the current zoning, a developer was pretty much able to do what was wanted, or what was proposed.
In the NB zone, yeah.
Not quite two-thirds of the site is zoned to permit that. The remaining portion is not, like, you know, a good portion of the property is. The concern that we had was, under the current zoning, there's virtually no standards. As you heard from Tom earlier, front side and rear setbacks are zero. So somebody could really just place the building on the entire property, and that would not be good planning at all. So we felt that, in large measure, if we can create a set of zoning regulations that would really be beneficial, reduce the scale of the project, ensure that the right amount of parking be provided on-site, get some landscape amenity on the property, have a parking lot designed that gets examined as part of the site plan review process, and also, with respect to the dry cleaning issue, only through a site plan will we get to clean up this property. And it will be required to be cleaned up to residential standards. So this is the one and probably only way that you would be able to get that site environmentally cleaned up.
And Joe, if the site were to remain in the plan, there would be zoning appropriate to proceed with a potential project, correct?
Yes.
And then there would be a site plan application at a minimum for the planning board prior to any approvals and development ever occurring, correct?
Correct.
And they would be conditions of approval, including all environmental.
Right. But even before that, Steve, what will happen is this plan has a set of zoning regulations as a table to identify how the site could be zoned. That will be refined, obviously, as we go down this road.
The obligation at this stage is to have draft ordinances for implementation to subsequently
Yeah, and the ordinance doesn't have
actual ordinances.
The ordinance doesn't have to be adopted until
Right.
March of 2026.
Right, potentially.
So that gives us plenty of time to work that out. But what will happen, so the public understands, is when we prepare a draft, the full draft ordinance, there will be a public discussion with the planning board. It will then get referred to the governing body. When they introduce it, you know, in final form, it comes back here for a consistency review with the master plan. And at that time, also, there could be a public comment. And then when the governing body holds its hearing on the ordinance, there's public comment. So there's plenty of time for the public to get involved in the ordinance preparation itself.
As well as the site plan, site plan application process subsequent there, too.
Right, because at that point, that's where an applicant will have to present, you know, the engineer, landscape architect, probably a traffic consultant, and a planner to justify what they are proposing to show is consistent with the ordinance or not.
Right.
And phase one of environmentals as well, right?
Right.
Correct, correct. Yeah.
Can you clarify that the owner would pay to the
Yes, it's the owner that does that cleanup, not the municipality. But it is the one way that that site can be environmentally cleaned up. So was there anything else on that site that we wanted to bring up?
No, I think you described it well. I would just add that if you
That's gonna have to be a lot closer, sorry.
Sorry, I thought I was compliant. I would just add that, as the site exists, there's three parcels. One is essentially vacant, it had a single-family home. One exists as a paved surface parking lot, and one is a one-story dry cleaners. And I think just driving by, which we've done over the course of many years, you look at it and you could, you might think it's underutilized, let's say, or in need of revitalization or any, you know, words like that, where you could, you'd have a vision of what it could be. And again, this was a developer's proposal that we were required by law to consider. And again, we started in one place, and it was brought down to the proposal that is included in this plan in draft form. But again, in consideration of the other uses that are permitted in the NB zone, which has been the zoning designation for that property for at least a couple decades, is my understanding, which allows mixed-use development up to three stories, other uses that are allowed are retail sales and services, personal service, professional offices, dance schools and studios, restaurants, financial institutions, and adult daycare, among others. So when you think about the realm of, you know, possible development scenarios for this site, as proposed, I would offer that it actually is less intense than some of the other development scenarios, as far as how the site could be developed as of right. So we talk about things like traffic and impacts to surrounding development. This would seem to be a lower-intensity proposal that's included in the plan. It's certainly something that we considered. And again, we did try to work with the developer to scale it back as much as we possibly could in a way that was presented in the plan.
So master evil, that's the best we can do?
Did not say.
Just so, just so that people understand, as of right means, as of the current zoning that's been there for decades, this 23 units could have been built, plus retail, you know, that's as of right currently. So that's what Mr. Barron's was just talking about. So it's a good comparison to what is proposed. But anyway, I just wanted to make sure that people understood that the plan that we're doing is broader-based, just like a master plan, but a little more specific. And then when we say the ordinance, we're talking about the zoning ordinance, so that people understand that there's a process. So can you talk a little more just to, we have the plan that we're talking about tonight, then we have the ordinance, which is our development regulations ordinance, where we have to put details in. I don't want to talk too much, but can you just explain that, you know, part of it? Because I think that gets lost in the lingo, you know, what we're actually talking about. And then, once you have it in zoning, then the applicant comes before, you know, and they're all things that, for example, the ordinance isn't due until March of 2026. So that can be affected between now and then with public hearings and public input.
Right. Typically zoning ordinances will have a whole host of area and bulk standards. And by that, I'm talking about a minimum lot area, minimum front side and rear yard setbacks, a building coverage limitation, a paved surface limitation, building height limitations, and other standards as well for landscape amenity and buffers and what have you. The current ordinance doesn't have much of that at all. And so that's why, when I was saying, oh, they can basically build on the entire property, that's a truism. In contrast, what we have done, and why we were able to whittle this down from 33 units down to 20, is that we suggested very specific setback standards, for example, so we reduced the size of the building. We have building height limitations, which don't exist currently. We have parking standards, which
Are there sidewalks?
There are sidewalks. Okay, please. There are sidewalk requirements as well. There's a whole host of additional standards that don't exist today, which will add to the overall character of the design, and I think improve the situation in contrast to what could occur right now within application to one of the boards.
Okay, so, thank you. Do you want to talk about at all the zoning process, the ordinance process? Just real quick, so they get the difference.
Since you pointed to me, yeah. So the plan is just the first step, and the plan is supposed to inform the zoning ordinance, which is essentially the development regulations, which dictate how land can be used and how it can be developed physically, as far as the dimensions, the height, the setbacks, building coverage, et cetera. So this is really the first step in the process, that the site is identified as producing some number of affordable housing units in a mixed-use inclusionary context, meaning that it's mixed rate, market rate, and affordable housing units. The subsequent step would be, assuming the plan gets adopted and certified at some point, that the governing body would have the opportunity to introduce an ordinance, which would effectively amend the city's current zoning ordinance, or development regulation ordinance, as it's referred to, which is a public process. Starts at the governing body, comes back to the planning board for master plan consistency review, then the ordinance gets adopted by the governing body. Once that zoning is in place
Adopted with a, after a public
After public
Before the governing body.
Right, right. So once that zoning is in place, the developer is then entitled to submit a site plan application to the planning board with all the development details, architectural plans, site plans, showing the specific locations of where the building will be, what it will look like, in elevation or three-dimensional form, where all the parking will be, down to where all the bathrooms will be in the units, frankly. So a very detailed plan will be the final step, which is also a public process. And so the public will have the opportunity to review this as it moves through that process.
And the applicant would have to meet their burden of proof with respect to getting the site plan approval, and if there's any deviations, be they variances or site plan design waivers, they would have to meet their burden of proof, the positive, negative criteria for same. So there are multiple steps in the process, all of which involve full participation of the public, obligations of the applicant, and criteria they must establish in order to proceed.
Okay, so sorry I interrupted.
Sorry, I interrupted. The interruption.
Keep going.
Should I dance?
No, 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 I'm saying, it looks as though, you know, Ms. Holmes and others have other things they want to
The second issue is the 25% factor, and Nancy, you went
Thank you.
So there was some discussion about the 25% language. So that language is
Nancy, microphone, please. Sorry. I know, I'm very loud, but I'm not that loud. Sorry, I apologize. That language specifically is, "Any municipality that receives an adjustment of its prospective need obligations for the fourth round or subsequent rounds based on a lack of vacant land shall, as part of the process of adopting and implementing its housing element fair share plan, identify sufficient parcels likely to redevelop during the current round of obligations to address at least 25% of the prospective need obligation that has been adjusted, and adopt realistic zoning that allows for such adjusted obligation, or demonstrate why the municipality is unable to do so." Statutory construction and the judicial review of that has been long established by the United States Supreme Court as a strict construction of what is actually written, not what any one person thinks that it should be. The term unmet need has been around for close to 25 years now, and that was not used in any of this. Fair Share Housing Center's interpretation of this is 25% of the prospective need. That removes that has been adjusted out of the legislature. The prospective need obligation that has been adjusted is your realistic development potential. That is the strict construction of the legislation. To say that this was a very thorough and thought-out, comprehensive legislative process is ridiculous. It was, it was proposed right before, right before Christmas, and the legislature tried to pass it before New Year's. It got slowed down because of public outcry. I know that one question was, "What are we doing to advocate for, to change the law in Trenton?" I know that at least three of the partners in my law firm testified at every public hearing on behalf of the 100 municipalities that we represent, out of the 566 in the state. I know that many other attorneys did the same and jumped up and down screaming that there was not enough time for public input, there was not enough time for all the municipalities to have the same deadline across the state. There are very few attorneys and planners in this state that are as well-versed as, there's nobody, as far as I'm concerned, as well-versed as Joe Burgess in affordable housing. But there are very, very few planners in this state that can draft these, and you can see, are very comprehensive, significant plans. They, they basically, the legislature is at fault for why this is so last minute. And that is where your anger should be directed, not at the planning board, not at the city, not at anyone else, other than people who tried to shoehorn this process into less than three months for a six-to-nine-month affordable housing plan. It was not comprehensive, it was not well-thought-out. They didn't, the, those who orchestrated this have no idea how municipalities operate, have no idea how few people practice this area of the law, and who practice planning. So this was not a well-thought-out process. I know my firm begged to have this, have the process at least extended to the end of the year, so that there was public input, and it fell on deaf ears. So there is an election coming up of legislators who voted for this. So just want to keep that in mind for everyone. So strict statutory construction, I just read the statute to you, there is a term for unmet need, there is a term for prospective need, and that is not what is written, and that is why there are at least three to four interpretations of the 25% rule, not two, not, it is not dangerous for us to take this position, because that's what the US Supreme Court would take. And it's not us versus fair share. This will be litigated whether, no matter which of the four interpretations Summit decided to take, so. And it is not the minority view at all. So the next question is
I'm sorry, before you finish with the chair's permission, if I could just follow up a question or two, maybe? The 25% of the prospective need as adjusted, the operative phrase.
Yes.
One of the viable, if not the most viable, interpretations would be as It's, one of the viable, if not the most viable interpretations would be as it's interpreted by the city in this plan, correct?
That's correct.
And that's a plan that is, that's an interpretation that has not yet been judicially determined, one way or the other, yet, in any court in the state of New Jersey, correct?
That is correct.
So, it is, is a, and it's a viable one, and it's shared, it's a position being taken by many municipalities currently and will continue to be over the next week or two, correct?
Over the next few years, yes.
Well, I meant over the next week or two, and the plans are adopted.
Yes, absolutely.
By June thirtieth.
That is correct.
And, as you said, it will be litigated regardless. So, might it arguably be imprudent if the city took a position that required it ultimately to have an obligation greater than that which it otherwise would have had? Not to say that if you have an obligation that is lesser, you're free to create more affordable housing. But if you have an obligation that is greater, you are not free to create less affordable housing.
That's correct. That's correct.
So, arguably, if not beyond argument, it would be imprudent for the city of Summit to take a different position than their interpretation than what it's taking right now.
Bless you. Yes, that is correct.
And otherwise, it's pending litigation, and it's to be determined prospectively. So, we should probably leave it at that.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then I can move on to the difference between a builder's remedy and a challenge to our plan.
Thank you.
A builder's remedy was created by the Supreme Court in Mount Laurel II, which was around nineteen eighty-five. That was allowed so that builders would be the impetus to, to force recalcitrant municipalities to comply. Typically, what happens in a builder's remedy litigation is a builder comes in where there's no housing element in a fair share plan adopted. There's no immunity from builder's remedy lawsuits. A builder comes in for typically two to three times the density that they're actually looking for, or that's even a precedent in the municipality, saying that they're the one, they're the catalyst for change, and they're the ones that are going to make a municipality comply. If you have immunity, builders are prohibited from bringing in such excessively large projects. In this, if, should the planning board adopt the plan tonight, which I recommend that it does, to satisfy the June thirtieth deadline, you will have immunity from builder's remedy lawsuits. There are several, as it states in the plan, there are several projects, which I know Joe and Tom are going to get into. There was a question about what was rejected and why, that could, that are waiting to see whether you adopt it tonight and, so that they can, they could file builder's remedy lawsuits. It's likely that they would. A challenge to your plan has to meet specific requirements, according to the administrative office of the courts, who created the directive for the program, which is the Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program. That they must state with particularity, and it's also in the statute, I'm sorry. They must state with particularity how the city's housing element and fair share plan violates the Mount Laurel doctrine. That doesn't mean I like my project better than you, than what you've put in the plan. That is, has the city complied with the Mount Laurel doctrine? That doesn't mean I don't like how you've credited certain things. It's, you're looking at the case law, the statute, COA regulations, and all of the other requirements, whether the city has complied with that doctrine. So, that is the difference. According to the AOC directive, if you don't meet that standard, your objection will be dismissed. So, there is, there is more protection for the municipality moving forward if it adopts the plan, if the planning board adopts the plan and we file it with the, with the program.
If I could jump in with a question, Madam Chair?
Yep.
And if that, if and when there's, we adopt the plan and proceed, if and when there is a challenge to the plan, we still maintain our immunity from builder's remedy lawsuits during the resolution of that challenge, be it by settlement conference or be it by session, i.e. litigation in the Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program in the Superior Court, correct?
Right. That is correct.
So, we don't lose the immunity while there's a challenge. So, it is much, much different than a builder's remedy lawsuit.
It is very different, yes. I think.
Can I ask one question?
Was Ms. Holmes going to explain the challenge?
I think, I was just looking at my.
Because you were going to compare the builder's remedy, which you just explained very well, to the challenge? That we're going to have the challenge period, so you were going to explain.
Yes, the challenge is whether, the challenge would be an objection that states with particularity how the city has violated the Mount Laurel doctrine.
And that's, that's the whole.
Yes, so.
We maintain our immunity during that process.
That's correct, yes. So, there, you cannot be sued with a builder's remedy lawsuit, nor can a developer bring in a builder's remedy-style project against the city.
So, to clarify, if, just for the public, if a builder brings a builder's remedy lawsuit to the city, regardless of any zoning regulation that's on the books, they could potentially build whatever they want. You could get a six-hundred-unit property in the middle of Summit that you can imagine what would do to this town, and we'd have no protection. Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Gives them a lot of power.
It does. It's unfortunate. I think, Joe, I think we're up to rejected projects and why.
Right, there are, there are two that are notable. The first one is the one at Wells Fargo, one ninety River Road. The applicant or individual initially came in with a two-hundred-and-fifty-four-unit development application on four-point-four acres. That came out to about forty-five units to the acre. We had a series of negotiations to negotiate that project downward. And I think the last alternative that we had seen from them was for a hundred-and-ninety-eight units, if I'm not mistaken, a hundred-and-ninety-eight. But in the end, and that was the subject of a meeting here on, that was the May twenty-ninth meeting. Where a lot of the public spoke vehemently against that project. And for, on the basis of that, that's why that was rejected in the end. There was a second project of a three-hundred-unit project on one-point-five acres that, putting aside for a moment that excessive density, it was also being proposed over the public right-of-way. And for that, for those two reasons, the excessive density and the fact that they were using public right-of-way to, to build their project, that project was rejected as well.
Those are all the projects that, that came to.
If I recall that correctly.
Okay, I just have a quick question. Can we just drill down a little bit on density for the three projects? So, the incline, the one project at the three-hundred unit, I believe, was a, was it two-hundred-and-fifty? What was that, per acre?
It was actually about two-oh-five, I just did the math.
Okay, so, so, so project number one was two-hundred-and-five per acre?
Three-hundred units divided by one-point-four-six acres is the.
Okay, so that was, so, because I think it's important to everybody to understand what the density of these projects are. Right, eight stories, three hundred units. The second project, which was the Wells Fargo, was forty-five an acre?
Initially came in at forty-five, and then it was reduced down to one-ninety.
Just for, for educating the public, the current density per acre is twelve.
Well, that's the presumptive density.
Right.
So, actually, that site does not permit, that site does not permit residential development today. But as, as a basis or a reference point, other zones that allow multifamily development are generally at around twenty units per acre.
Yep.
Except for the MBC zone, which allows thirty. So, that's the upper limit of what.
And I do stand corrected. When it was two-hundred-and-fifty-four units on four-point-four acres, that was fifty-seven-point-seven to the acre. And when they reduced it down to one-ninety-eight, it was still at forty-five to the acre.
So, still more than twice comparable, quote-unquote.
Correct. And for those reasons, that's.
And then the firehouse, the at-home, the, the firehouse, the at-home.
We're going to talk about that separately. But we could talk about that one now.
Let's just talk about it.
Technically, that wasn't a project that came forward.
Correct.
That required consideration under the Act for inclusion or exclusion. But it's a, I'll let you speak to it, I guess it's a possibility.
That forty-two-unit project was on zero-point-eight acres. And that nets out to a dense, it grosses out to a density of fifty-two-point-five to the acre. Now, the parking for that site was one parking space, is one parking space per dwelling unit. That was what was being proposed, forty-two parking spaces for forty-two units. The resident, the state's residential site improvement standards, there's two standards I want to talk about. The conventional one, they break out requirements based on one-bedroom, two-bedroom, or three-bedroom units. But as a general review, they talk about two spaces per unit. The other standards are for one-bedroom, it's a one-point-eight parking spaces per unit. For two-bedrooms, it's two-point-zero, and for three-bedrooms, it's two-point-three spaces per unit. But if you just use two as a general rule of thumb.
This is a required bedroom distribution, and in any way that would basically require something of approximately two units on average.
Yes, and that would be eighty.
Using the two-unit average.
And that would be eighty-four parking spaces versus the forty-two that were being proposed. Now, I will also point out that around train stations is often used, if the standard is often used, is one-point-five parking spaces per unit, recognizing that people will be using mass transit to a certain degree. But even at that standard, that would suggest that they needed sixty-three parking spaces to meet the needs of that facility, and they were coming in with forty-two parking spaces. That's a heck of a shortfall. And it was for that reason, for those reasons, that we were having discussions with the developer and talking about quite a bit fewer number of units on the site. And when they chose not to reduce the number, we suggested maybe we could look at another site, or they could look at another site and come back to us. But they stayed pushing this one property. And I know there are some fiscal implication, financial implications as well that were of significance.
Right, and before I get into that, just looking at the big picture. So, the, the site in question, which had been the Broad Street West site originally, is four parcels, three of which are city-owned currently. Lot one is the Chestnut Lot, the public Chestnut Parking Lot. Lot two is privately owned. It serves as parking for the firehouse, as well as a driveway, and parking for the adjacent funeral home. Lot three is developed with the, what is now the old firehouse, and Lot four is developed with an office building. So, again, three of the parcels, except for Lot two, are city-owned. And anyone that's been following development issues in Summit is probably aware that this site has been studied extensively for the last ten years or so. There's been various proposals and various iterations of zoning frameworks, the most recently of which was adopted last year for the new Morris Broad Crossroads Overlay Zone, which proposes mixed-use development of the site, which includes a multifamily, well, residential component with a minimum requirement of seven affordable units. So, that's the current zoning on the books. I would offer that through those ten years of analysis, not necessarily done, just done generally, I believe the city articulated what its vision was for the site based on a number of themes and factors. And this is based on the input of, I believe it was thousands of people in Summit. Thousands of residents gave their input as far as what they wanted to see. Obviously, not everybody had the same exact vision, but I think there were general themes that, one, that were articulated through the process. One is that the site serves as a gateway to the downtown. So, it's on sort of the western boundary of the gateway. Another was that the site should be developed comprehensively. So, all four parcels in total comprise a land area of about one-point-six acres. So, the city and its residents that were involved in the process wanted to see a comprehensive design for the whole site that in some way would also give back to the city, recognizing that it would result in a loss of public parking. So, there was a desire to see some public parking, there was a desire to see some green space. And beyond that, there are, there were certain financial, financial implications as part of the consideration. So, on the one hand, I believe the at-home, the at-home and Summit project would have depleted the entirety of the city's trust fund. So, I think it was about two million dollars. Not only that, the city purchased Lot four, which is the office building, and I believe still owes a note of about one-point-four million dollars on it. So, it was always the intent that the site would be developed by a private development entity, working with the city as a partner, and that there would be some revenue generated, both at the point of sale and also annually as a tax ratable. So, as proposed, the, the proposed development would have caused the city a few million dollars. We don't, we actually don't know the exact figure, and that was sort of part of the problem. Is that the city would also have been on the hook for any funding shortfalls, as I understand. So, again, it's a difference of seven figures, really undefined at this point. So, it's hard for the city to commit as a, one of many considerations as to why this project, as proposed, was, was not selected for that site.
If I may, real quick, on that note, no, no pun intended, but the, the, there would have been a significant municipal obligation excluding the potential to have to bond and/or find, otherwise finance, should the low-income housing tax credits not come through, because they're competitively sought and often do not come to fruition.
There would have been a commitment.
Is that correct?
Right, a commit, so, an undefined amount in the seven figures.
On top of a, a defined amount in the seven figures, correct?
Correct, the shortfall there, right. And also, the city's third-round plan, which was court-certified and based on a settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center, indicated that the city would find scattered sites throughout the municipality. So, it would not put all of its affordable housing on one site. That would, that would stand out, essentially. And that, again, it would come up with different projects or sites, as this plan does, in the form of group homes, inclusionary development, senior housing, assisted living. It's all in the plan, it's all in the charts, all these different sites. We heard that there's only one new unit being developed. I don't know how that math was arrived at. I calculated very quickly, in a span of about a minute, that at least forty-five new units would be constructed that don't exist today, and possibly more through overlay zoning and other mechanisms. So, to say that Summit will only create one unit in ten years is just not accurate. And again, it's all.
I made that comment.
No, well, you can.
Madam Chair, it's not a, it's, Madam Chair, it's not a back and forth in a debate.
I understand. Excuse me just a moment. Let them go through everything, because there were so many questions. Let, let them get through everything, and we'll see where we go from there.
I could, we'll get to it when we get to it. Anyway, I'm almost done with. So, anyway, in case, when the city considered this site, it considered the best interest of all twenty-two thousand-plus residents in Summit. And by the way, it never closed the door to at-home at Summit to come up with another site. That was always a possibility. And when this idea was first brought up, that, in that very first meeting, which I was a part of, we said, you know what, we appreciate your experience, you know, we'll vet the project, we'll run it through the appropriate channels, and I believe it was even vetted in public at one point. There's all sorts of comments, both for it and against it. And there was always the conversation that, listen, if it doesn't work out here, we'll try to find something else where we could do something. Nothing else was proposed. This was, had gone on for over a year. So, for some reason, there was a focus on sticking with this site. And again, for all the reasons I just sort of laid out, that Joe laid out, it wasn't put into the plan. So, that's not to say we could never, the city could never work with at-home and Summit. It's just that the plan that was proposed doesn't work for these two lots at this publicly-owned site.
Right. And currently, that is zoned for residential combination, mixed use, right? Where it's a minimum of seven affordable, but it would likely be more like eight, nine, or ten, correct? For that lot, for that property.
Probably around the seven mark, given the density control, and in theory, it could be more, but. And, and.
So, it's there, it's been zoned to have that eighty-twenty mix, so hopefully.
Well, a guaranteed minimum is one way to think about it.
Right.
You'll have at least seven units, right?
Got it. Okay, what's next?
Do a couple of small things?
Get the mic, please.
Okay, there was one question, and I do want to thank the public, there were excellent questions and excellent comments. Ashwood Court was brought up by Ms. Morrison. Ashwood Court was part of a settlement with the neighbors on Ashwood Court and Habitat for Humanity on the Italian, former Italian-American club. They gave the city the possibility of creating two, two units there. After investigating it, it does not look like it's large enough to handle an affordable housing project there. housing project there. So, that's why it was taken out of the plan. So, but it was thoroughly investigated for several years after this settlement agreement came through. As far as St. Teresa's goes, St. Teresa's approached the city and wanted to explore all of its options for, for creating affordable housing, which we, we greatly appreciate. Right now, it is just in the conceptual mode. I know that Fair Share Housing Center does appreciate, I, I did appreciate the Lutheran joke, that was very funny. I did say to them, you know, this is the Catholic Church, it doesn't exactly move terribly fast, and they said they were okay with that, as long as we get a letter of intent from them. So, Fair Share was excited about them with the possibility of creating affordable housing there, and I do want to thank the Methodist Church as well for being very generous with their education building. One correction that does need to be made, and it's my fault, that, that project may create up to thirteen senior units, but we don't know because the engineering's being done right now.
Okay.
So, so that's, that's something, there, there'd be another created unit. And I know there was an issue, going back to saying that seventeen units have already been created, and one, and only one unit's being created for the RDP, but that also ignores the units in the unmet need. It also ignores the fact that the reason that they're already created is because Summit has never been exclusionary, and they've created units to the point where they had a thirteen-unit surplus from round three, from the prior round and round three. They have created units as we've gone along. Yes, Fair Share Housing Center filed a motion in, that was alluded to, that there was litigation for six months. There was no litigation, they filed a motion, and I, we worked with them cooperatively for those six months to make sure that we came to a resolution of that in time for the round, for round three to be over. And I do thank Fair Share for, for their input, and we collaborated together. So, it wasn't an adversarial issue. So, we just wanted to make sure that we, you know, we, we satisfied round three moving into round four. And then, I just want to make sure I get all the, there were a couple, how is Summit different than Milburn? Milburn had a settlement agreement that was court-approved, and they removed one of the main projects from their plan. Unilaterally. Summit has never done that. Summit, like I said, has created affordable housing for many, many years, many decades, as a matter of fact. It has never removed a project from its plan that was court-approved. So, Milburn got sued by Fair Share Housing Center. And, you know, that, that's my understanding of what's going on. Why Milburn is doing what they're doing in their round four plan, I have no idea. I don't know if they, if their settlement with Fair Share was encompassing their fourth-round plan, so I can't comment on that, I don't know. Just want to make sure that I get all the legal questions, forgive me. Oh, Summit Housing Authority. As I spoke about earlier, about the removal of the residency preference, I have, I have several towns' worth of experience with housing authorities and ensuring that they can leverage funding if, if necessary. One of the main requirements for pursuing either ni, uh, low-income housing tax credits or DCA funds or other funding sources is that you are included, that a project is included in a housing element in Fair Share Plan. That was done not to upset Summit Housing Authority in any way, I, I think we all wanted to set them up for success. It's a lot easier to get that, get a, an approved plan that, and I have to remind everyone, this does not have to be done tomorrow, this is a ten-year plan. So, if we wanted to give Summit Housing Authority the most flexibility possible, that when they decide what they want to do, they are set up for success. It has nothing, it's had, was never an intention to leverage them in any way, to foreclose any further discussions, or not continuing to be collaborative with them in the future. It was meant to ensure that at least one box was checked, that they could then move forward with any plans that they had, funding-wise. There's lots and lots of money available, particularly this, this round, and I know of several housing authorities that are moving for low-income housing tax credits right now to improve their, their units. So, that was the only reason, it was with the best of intentions, so. And look forward to working with the Housing Authority in the future.
Right.
I think, I, those are all the questions that I listed. Do you have any more?
Yeah, one or two. There was a comment about the concern with the strain on the school system, and I'm going to tie that back to the vacant land adjustment and the RDP analysis.
Okay.
Because as I know the board has heard me speak in the past, that planning is a balance of a lot of competing interests. And on the one hand, we do want to accom- accommodate affordable housing, and that does tie in with, you know, greater densities, and then that means more units. And the vacant land adjustment process and the RDP process that's spelled out in the legislation acknowledges that there are those municipalities that are fully developed and are entitled to a significant reduction from what their DCA original number was. And when you look at our analysis, I believe you'll find that it is completely consistent with the rules and regulations spelled out in the new legislation. And that's what resulted into that, into that eighteen-unit RDP number. Now, there was a suggestion that the RDP should be eighty units. In no way, shape, or form would the RDP methodology and the vacant land adjustment methodology result in eighty units. Could it be twenty units rather than eighteen? Yes, there is some minor, and I'll stress, minor flexibility in how you interpret certain things, but there's no way this is jumping from eighteen to eighty. And if it were eighty, you know, that would result in the very strain that that one person was talking about, being concerned about, on the school system, because that would generate quite a number of additional public school attendees, not just from the affordable units, because in all likelihood, you wouldn't be dealing with eighty units through 100% affordable projects. First of all, the municipality's position historically has been, you want to see it done through inclusionary development. So, even if we were to assume half of that number, and let's say forty units were through inclusionary development, that would mean an additional 200 units into municipality plus the other forty, for the other forty
Yeah.
RDP units that were suggested. So, when you take all that into consideration, I think you could understand why the RDP calculation is so important to you in terms of impact, not just in terms of public school attendees, but in terms, in terms of traffic generating potential, and impact on recreation facilities, and all the other infrastructure aspects of the municipality that make it worthwhile to live there. And that's why we're very comfortable in that we did the process consistent with the regulations and result in a housing plan that should pass muster.
Thank you. Do we have anything else?
There, there is one more correction that I forgot to mention when we were speaking of the Housing Authority. Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yeah, now, now we can.
Sorry. It, there is a typo that only 100 of the Vito Gallo apartments are included, and that should be twenty, 125. So, it's
So, we'll fix that.
It's supposed to encompass 100% of the Housing Authority's units. That was just a typo, you'll have to forgive us, we've been doing a lot of housing plans across the state, so.
Those two typos would be not substantial, sufficient to be modified. Well, actually, they could be incorporated in any adoption even this evening because they've been referenced.
Okay, that's what I wanted to
Correct?
Okay.
That's correct, yes.
That's, that's one, now it's two lawyers' opinions, thank you. There's probably a punchline there, but please don't, it's too easy.
Quick question.
Yes.
Nancy, can you just take the, the mentioned lawsuit with Fair Share a little bit further and make the public feel a little more confident? Seems like there's still some questions on whether or not we were in a six-month lawsuit with Fair Share. Can you just expand upon the motion filing?
Oh, sure, yes. So, Fair Share Housing Center was in contact with us in October related to how the, the city was, how, how the city was progressing with its 50-new units term in its, its settlement agreement. Unfortunately, my kids were sick for about three weeks, off and on, off and on. I missed their last email, and in, and then they filed a motion because I did not respond to them, it was my fault. So, immediately after they filed the motion, we began speaking with them, and we went back and forth, and we discussed, we discussed all of the documentation that we had, all of the projects that, that we were counting, and we've gone back and forth for six months. There was really no adversarial other than the motion being filed. We had already reported that we had enough credits to satisfy the 50-new units, and we worked out a consent order with them that's, as of today, sitting on the judge's desk for a signature, so.
I know there's a question about whether or not, I think maybe Diego had mentioned with the gotcha moment of, well, we had to build 50, or we had to get to 50. Can you just talk about that versus 36?
Oh, right, so, no, in the, in the settlement agreement, we had to facilitate the construction of, of 50-new units. It didn't say that we had to, it didn't say that we had to build a 50-unit, 100% affordable project. There, there were disagreements between us and Fair Share as far as what exactly that, that number meant, but because we had enough projects and enough units to satisfy the 50, both sides compromised on what that, what that language said, and in an interest of, of settlement, we came up with the consent order. So, so, nobody, nobody won, we settled, so.
Any other, okay. Can you remind us what the other typo was, because we want to, we want to, oh, it's the 125 for Vito Gallo, and what was the other?
Uh, was there, what was the other typo? Oh, the Tiger Baron, yes, thank you. The Tiger Baron was a different, I think it was mistyped in the master plan, right? Is that where you got the information?
It was definitely referenced in another master plan. Oh, as far as being sponsored from Summit Housing Authority?
Yes.
It was due to the 2008 or 1994 master plan, we're talking about.
How that site came to be.
Okay.
We could take a look at, but as far as the substance of the plan, it's irrelevant.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't know if we, we can
Yeah, those units are constructed.
Not even sure what it is, that I think we're gonna just fix it later.
There may be other grammatical or even numerical errors that are clearly just errors, where those numbers and references are stated clearly elsewhere, and it might be in one place that it's
Okay. So, even the 125 for Vito Gallo, that's already fixed, like it's
It's in the narrative that we, that we intended the 100%.
Right, and
All right, so we don't even have to
It is referenced in the narrative, so there's a site description which indicates it's 125 units, so.
Okay.
It just is referencing correctly.
What do you think?
No, it's fine.
Okay, so we, we won't edit it tonight? Because it's all, it's in there correctly once. Okay, and we all, okay. Anything else?
Just want to double-check, just to make sure we didn't miss anything. Oh, there's a question about how to alleviate traffic on, at Tacono Park, I believe, was that the other project on River Road? Is that, I believe? That also has to, did it not have a traffic study, right?
No, we didn't.
No, okay, I don't, I don't know the answer to that one, then.
About the traffic study on Russell and East Summit?
I couldn't hear that.
Was there a traffic study done by Russell and East Summit? Well, you're dealing with uses that are permitted in the zone at relatively similar densities as, as what's already permitted, so as far as an impact to traffic and whether or not that development would warrant its own traffic study, on the one hand, traffic issue, traffic and parking-related issues will be vetted at the planning board level.
Site plan application.
It's a bit premature to review those at this point. And again, they're, they're permitted uses and generally permitted intensity of development.
But they're commonly presented at applications.
Right.
Traffic studies.
Right.
Yep.
Was there a environmental study done on the site?
In order to be
That would be a subsequent step in the normal course of development.
It won't be allowed without
That was addressed earlier as was one of the many things that has to be done in the context of a site application by the, if not prior, to a site app, approval applica, site plan approval application, and done so by the develop, prospective developer on their
Just for the record, a few other clarifications, just a few other typo clarifications.
So, they could all be incorporated in whatever is adopted.
Right, and, and, again, I'm not sure they have any bearing anyway, but let me just do a quick math.
Sorry.
So, the actual, just to, so there's, there's no doubt, the RDP, the unmet need would be 327, not 328, as stated in one or two places.
Okay.
So, it's actually 327. It is stated correctly in a number of places, but I know in at least one place, it's 327.
Okay.
St. Teresa's is spelled
St. Teresa's is spelled with an H, should not have an H, so thank you for that. Bear with me.
Page 36 is the narrative.
Page 36, right, it says unmet need of 37 and not 327, so
Oh.
The number is 327. Difference between 345 and 18 is the unmet need, 327.
Okay, so, we'll be sure to, that's his department.
Right, so, yeah.
Make sure that the typos are fixed.
You'll be providing an updated version, post-adoption, that has all these incorporated.
Exactly right.
Okay.
Assuming adoption.
Okay, yeah. All right.
I want to clarify my comment that Tom, Mr. Barron's, just to set the record straight.
Not supposed to.
I pointed out all these typos.
Can you make it really, really, really short?
Let's clarify.
Wait, wait, there's
Because we're 11:05, everyone's getting tired, but yeah.
There's a quid pro quo for all the typos you get.
Yeah, I gave them all the typos. So, the RDP is 18, right? That's the RDP. There's 17 units that are already occupied by people, and they're built, 17 units, right?
Yeah.
So, in order to meet our RDP, which is our obligation under the plan, right? How many more units do we have to build?
Well, there's also the unmet need.
But you don't have to do those. You have to, how many, to meet our RDP, how many to meet our RDP do we have to build?
You were gonna explain it, but you weren't gonna
I did, if you put the
We, we got, we got how you got to one. I think everybody got it.
Right.
Why don't you let Mr. Burrage, the professional, answer the question beyond that.
Because, as I, as I said in my direct testimony, there is an unmet need, in this case, it's 327, and well, that's an aspirational number. In the course of the events of this process, you do have to show how you're addressing at least a segment of that number, and that's where the additional numbers that Tom had mentioned about 45 come into play.
But do any of those have to be built? Will we be under default under the plan if we don't build them?
Do you want to answer that?
They are planned for it.
Anyway, I, it's one
I, I think if we ask Fair Share Housing Center if we could get away with not building any of them for the next 10 years, the answer you're gonna get is not sure, go ahead.
Well, I mean, what we're getting, you're, you're gonna build 18, and that's obviously gonna get you in trouble too, but
But I think, I think everybody understands the difference.
So, also, just to clarify, like I said before, because Summit has been proactive in creating affordable units, just like 100% of the municipalities in this state, if you have excess credits, you can apply it toward your next round. Fair Share Housing Center consistently agrees with this position, and there's nothing that the city is doing wrong in doing so.
Isn't it correct that they require, you can go back and you can be, you could have a deficit or a surplus, you can look back and even potentially avail yourself of bonus credits in subsequent rounds? So, there's
That's correct.
Nothing wrong
That's correct.
morally, constitutionally, or mathematically, with, with, with potentially having more units in a round than you're obligated
That's correct, yes.
At a minimum.
And, and every municipality in the state brings forward excess credits for every, for every round, so.
Well, I think we're done, we're correct? I want to thank everybody and the board. Not done the meeting, not done the meeting, don't worry, done with our board professional comments, and I just want to And I just wanted to ask, does the planning board have any other questions before we, okay. So hearing none, we will now.
I did draft a resolution, Madam Chair, in the event.
Yes, thank you.
I take that back. Council for Affordable, Affordable Housing Council, and I co-drafted a resolution, I didn't make the, mean to take all the, all the responsibility.
You can have it, it's fine.
Or any credit. The, in the event that the board is of the mindset to adopt the plan as proposed this evening, I could, there are three, there, be it resolved paragraphs, very simply, be it resolved that the board hereby adopts the fourth-round housing element Fair Share Plan, and recommends mayor and council endorse same, and implement same. Another, be it further resolved that the resolution and the fourth-round plan be filed with the Superior Court within 48 hours of adoption by the board, but no later than June 30, 2025. My math is that within 48 hours would be sooner than June 30, 2025. And I will not be the one filing the plan if it's adopted, but that is the statutory requirement, that it be done so. Within that timeframe, and copies be sent to the State Office of Planning Advocacy and the Union County Planning Board within 30 days. So if the board is of the mindset this evening to adopt the plan as proposed, you can go right to a motion, second roll call vote on adopting the resolution, adopting the plan.
Got it.
Counsel, I think it was.
2015, not 2025, thank you.
2015, yes, on the, second whereas should be 20.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Can we just confirm that, the second whereas should be July 15?
No.
It should be July 2, 2015.
2015.
It just says 2025, is a typo.
2025 should be 2015.
Oh, okay.
July 2, 2025 hasn't happened yet. God willing, it will.
That was very good.
That's right.
Couldn't come sooner than.
Okay. Are we ready? Can we have a motion to adopt the round four resolution for the housing element in Fair Share Plan? With the edits that are typos. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. No, no, there was a tie, so it's up to somebody standing.
Well, we have, we have nine members, so everybody's regular this evening, so to speak.
Yeah.
So anybody can move in, second, everybody can vote.
Yeah, a second?
Second.
Okay. So you have the honors of doing the roll, Ms. Sands.
Please, Chair Bolson Alvarez?
Yes.
Mayor Fagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamlet?
Yes.
Ms. Bowen?
Yes.
Mr. Delmaso?
Yes.
Mr. Formicelli?
Yes.
Mr. LaJoy?
Yes, with a thank you to our consultants for all their hard work.
Mr. Sala?
Yes.
And Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, so we do have minutes to approve? Anybody have any edits to the minutes? Okay, so do we have a motion to approve them? Second?
Second.
I'm second.
Second?
Say it again?
I second.
Okay.
You were present that night, right?
You have to be present, yeah.
May 29?
Yeah.
I was there.
And I think we have.
You were not there.
No, that's right, you can't do it, that's right.
So I'll make a motion.
I watch these things, this is what they pay me the big bucks for.
Right, right.
So, Mayor, would you move?
I would motion to approve.
Okay, and who's seconding?
Someone else.
Second.
Okay. I think Ms. Sands has the correct list of those who are present, so.
Yes, those are all your eyes, and your abstentions are those who are absent.
Mayor Fagan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamlet?
Councilmember Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. Delmaso?
Aye.
Mr. LaJoy?
Aye.
Mr. Sala?
Aye.
And Mr. Stern?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you.
Okay, that concludes our agenda today. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Second?
Second.
Okay, good. Motion, I mean, yes, motion is, what?
Ball of paper.
Yay, let's go.
All right.